Twenty-six, twenty-eighteen, with an indication from Father Deborah.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we praise and thank you for your presence in our lives and in our world. We thank you for the time and the talents of our council members. We thank you for the protection offered by our service people, by our police, and by our fire people. We thank you for your goodness in our world. We thank you for blessing our families. And we thank you for tonight to remember all of the families that are living in fear at the border. We pray that the Congress will be enlightened to make laws that will legitimately welcome them to our country. We pray for wisdom for the members of the council as they offer their time and talents for give guidance and their vision for our city. We can ask you, Lord, that they will be open to your guidance, direct. We beseech you, oh Lord, all our actions by your holy inspirations and carry them on by your gracious assistance so that every prayer and good work of ours may begin always from you. And by you be happily ended. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Call the meeting order. Pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Commission President Joffe.
Here.
Commission Vice President Mocker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Van Bussker.
Here.
City Attorney Cirillo.
Here.
City Administrator Loviski.
Here.
Finance Director DiPaolo.
Here.
Fire Chief Gil Martin.
Here.
Library Director Keyes. Police Chief Locata. Public Works Director Schramm.
Here.
Recreation Director Leach.
The next, do you need more time for your, you need more time? Okay, we'll come back to you. Regular meeting of June 12th, 2018, approval of minutes, commissioners. You got a chance to review?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve our regular scheduled commission meeting on June 12th.
Second. No motion, we have a second. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes five zero. Finance Director DiPaolo, Treasurers Report, please.
General Fund has $1,997,579.35. Clean deposits, $33,400.01. Garbage and trash fund, $1,207,834.16. Special Purpose Funds, $2,879,411.38. Stormwater Utility Fund, $470,857.33. Debt Service Fund, $211,636.20. Contingency, $5,483,748.01. General Fund Incumbrances, $225,003.16. Total Off Funds, $12,509,469.58.
Questions for Finance Director? No? I already ran your keep tonight, thank you. Public comments and requests regarding the ten items. There are many, there's one item, unfinished business, several items of new business and some resolutions. If you'd like to address any of the items on our agenda, come up now and you'll have three minutes to address the commission on that item before we take any action or discuss it. See, oop. I think he doesn't purpose.
He gives, number twelve.
Leo Benz, 3000 Northeast 31st Avenue. They left you copies here, but I don't read them. I said John Loviski has followed your suggestion and contacted the county about changing the name of our intercoastal streets and avenues to Intercoastal Drive with our existing streets and avenue names underneath. This would be similar to Marina Drive and Lighthouse Drive. Now the county wishes your consent to be more formal in the form of a resolution, which is the last item on your agenda this evening. I cannot stay to the end of the meeting, so I'd like to interject the following additional areas that I believe would like to be included. Lot twenty-three through twenty-five at the end of Forty-S sixth Street and Palmeir, DeCarlo Key, and Decroft Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments regarding agenda items? All right, then we'll close. Public comments regarding agenda items. There are no reports from city administration, there are no department reports, and probably based on what Commissioner Mocker brought up at the budget workshop, probably an appropriate time, get a report from the city attorney on the county lawsuit or litigation, there is no lawsuit yet.
There is no lawsuit yet. The special counsel, which was retained by the city, Michael Wilson from Brown Cassell, has been working with all the interested parties. The insurance company has requested a pre-suit mediation, and we have indicated through our council that we would facilitate that so long as it, A, doesn't unnecessarily delay us pursuing it through litigation, and B, we're not really intending to attend a mediation to do anything other than help them to figure out who's going to pay us what amount of our clients. So, while we were during the workshop, I thought maybe that might come up, and I emailed our attorney, Michael Wilson. He's on vacation, but he indicated that he had told him before he left that if they don't have it scheduled and concluded, by the time it gets back, we're going to proceed the litigation. It's unfortunate we've gotten to that point, but what it is, nobody wants to step up and take responsibility for paying us their check.
Commissioner Mocker?
At one point, we talked about reaching out to Chip Lamaca to see if we could get any help from him. Had that ever happened, and did he help us at all? We did. I believe there were conversations, and that we did get some information about from the county's position on it, but since we've taken it to the next level with the attorney to go power lawsuit, we haven't got anything else from them. There's some issues that go back from the county. County has some issues that they would like to have addressed or any discussions to resolve it, but we did get some feedback from them finally, at least in position that, I don't know that they have any real claim against the city, as was asserted by the county attorney, but they do have some concerns with a claim filed against them that they would like to be part of any pre-suit discussions.
Okay. So, couple, any other questions for city attorney on that? I assume we had to retain special counsel because your firm is conflicted out?
There's no real conflict, but remember, this involves an insurance issue.
Oh, there are insurance.
We were trying to recover from our own insurance company through the contract with the contractor, and they, remember, they're responsible, it's not us, go talk to our sub, and then they had never put the sub and insurance on notice, so that's been done. So now we've got the contractor, the contractor's insurance, the subcontractor, the subcontractor's insurance, and the county involved. And because we're an additional insurer, and there might be claims in a way, the insurance company's handling this, we brought in someone who does both insurance plans and construction litigation to do that for the city.
Okay. And on the mediation aspect of things, as I recall, you explained us the process before, there's basically what I'll call essentially a mediation process, as I recall culminating with an epic meeting with the Broward County Commission that kind of serves as a mediation.
We have not initiated that long process yet because we want to see how this mediation goes. We have, because if we're going to sue the county, and we haven't gotten to the point, I guess, to evaluate the claim with our special counsel, that a lawsuit with the county is the way to go right now. And we can initiate that, we certainly, when he goes back from vacation next week, I can certainly have a conversation with him of whether we should initiate that process, but we hadn't initiated that process.
I can just tell you right now, commissioners, if we don't start, this is going to, this has got all the makings of a long, protracted piece of litigation.
Expensive.
Expensive.
Yep.
And, you know, I have some familiarity with those types of litigation. And so, I have no problem mediating, but again, to your point, what you said, I don't want that causing a delay for the recovery of our rights and the revenues and the monies that have been expended. So, as much as I don't want to throw down the gauntlet too much, I feel like we need to trigger that process, because that's like a hundred and twenty day process, right?
Yeah.
Those are my, those are my thoughts, because I just, when you've got this many people that can go like this, those mediations are hard and they usually don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think the complicated thing is the way we think it should have happened, and we still continue to think it should happen, is that our contractor and insurance company makes us hold, that's why we entered them in the contract, that's why we put the provisions in there, that's why we're an additional insurer, and let them go figure out who they should be reimbursed from, which might or might not increase the county, which might or might not increase the sub, and that just hasn't happened, and that's why we're going to look carefully at the way the insurance company and the contractor, which there's an attorney's fees provision in the contract as well, is handling things and dealing with this issue. You know, the contractor's responsible for subcontractors, the subcontractor's responsible for having the right insurance, and so we did everything we could correctly going into this thing, but the way it's shaking out is we don't, our contractor and contractor's insurance company hasn't stepped up the way they should have and has created this problem.
And so, I'm sorry, who has requested this mediation?
The insurance company's counsel.
So that would be the contractor's insurance company, and we're an additional insurer?
That's correct. And they're looking to schedule a mediation, but they've been trying to do that for a few weeks, and so that, like I said, anticipation, I got the confirmation that if there's no, if there's nothing set by the time, I guess it would be the end of next week, because our attorney, he's retained, is on vacation, and told him if it's not done by the time I return to vacation, we'll just proceed the litigation. And he's back, he's back the fifth, I think. Yeah, and that would be against our contractor, not against the county, and so we'll have to have a conversation with him about if the county needs to be an appropriate party, how we go about initiating the trio and adding the county at the appropriate time.
I would also suggest, I'm fine with proceeding as long as this gets scheduled, if it doesn't get scheduled soon, it's not happening.
Yeah.
They want to mediate, they should also pay for the mediation costs.
That goes without saying.
About splitting me, I'm sorry, I should say.
He's been told that.
I totally agree.
No, he's been told that.
Okay, okay, all right.
All right.
It's frustrating, I grant you that, and it's frustrating being as your attorney in that we do everything we can leading into these cases to set you up with indemnification with insurance, with responsibility to contractor, with responsibility for subcontractors, and.
And the taxpayers are on the hook on every side of this debacle. It's pretty pathetic. Okay, thank you for the update.
Yeah, I wish I had better news, but that's the news.
Litigation. No, any other questions? No reports of standing committees. Our next meeting, planning and zoning, excuse me, is meeting August seventh, code enforcement August twenty-first, community appearance July nineteenth, special magistrate July thirteenth, parade advisory August second. Are we ready for our presentation from Florida Power and Light? Okay, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Hogans, if I have a call, for our Florida Power and Light presentation on apparently their Hurricane Irma response.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me, to the mayor and commission and entire staff here. It's been a pleasure and congratulations on your sixty-two years, I understand, we just hit sixty-two for the city of Lighthouse Point. Congratulations on that. I know that the mayor and the alternates are working very hard with the leak of city as well, so. My name is Tim Hogans with Florida Power and Light, I'm External Affairs Area Manager for the North Broward region, and we're going to talk a little bit about Hurricane Irma, some lessons learned, some ways that we can improve upon, and then some things that went right as well. So, we have the technical difficulty all squared away, we're set to go, but this is Hurricane Irma, as we all remember. You probably can't even see the state of Florida right now, I'll try to highlight it if possible, but it was the size of Texas, about four hundred miles wide, moving over a twenty-four hour time period. So as you can imagine, I was actually shipped over to the west coast, Hendry County, and worked over there for the first seven days. We all worked sixteen, eighteen hour days around the clock, and we'll talk about some of the crews that came down here as well. But while I was over there in Hendry County, family members of mine in Georgia, Jacksonville and the area, they were getting pounded as well in Texas at the same timeframe, so. FPL, we cover thirty-five counties, thirty-five out of the sixty-seven, so we make up about half the entire state of Florida. There's fifty-five utilities in the state of Florida, FPL just happens to be the largest. So a little bit more about the preparation. This is nothing new to FPL, we do it every, the beginning of May, the first week of May, and this is when all of our execs and all nine thousand plus employees get together and review their storm process, right? So, electors are welcome to come by as well at any given time. We did a little something different in the picture in the middle, we had some embedded how this come in, it's the first time we actually used that, and the whole point was that is to help speed up the restoration process. So we bunkered down, we had our crews there, stayed ahead of the storm, and then during the actual storm, they actually stayed in some of those, and that cut down a lot of time with regards to the half hour to transport them there and at the beginning and at the end of the night. Over twenty-eight thousand restoration workers were there on site. The blue area on the left and on the right-hand side, that's our service territory, we talked about it a minute ago, where there's thirty-five counties that FPL actually served. We had about twenty-nine staging sites, of which there's about a thousand people per site, and at those locations, we washed clothes, fifty-six thousand loads of clothes, 1.3 million bottles of water, 3.4 million gallons of fuel.
What's the closest staging area to Lighthouse Point?
Closest to here? We have one at DBNC Center, as well as the Gulfstream Race Track, and that's a picture of it at the bottom right-hand side as well. So we have them strategically placed throughout the county, each one of those dots represent one of the staging sites as well. Top right is a picture of Daytona Beach Speedway, to your questions, Commissioner, at the very bottom right, that's actually a picture of Helenel Beach at the Gulfstream Race Track. So as you can see, it's a huge operation, over 3.4 million fuel, gallons of fuel that we're using throughout the entire timeframe. So safety is most important to us with that twenty-eight thousand plus restoration effort. That wasn't the largest in Florida, but that was the largest in the industry history, so something that we're proud of, and what we tried to do is actually get the crews there, bunkering down before the actual storm comes, right? Because after the storm, we've already missed the fall. So, storm surge is obviously a big issue with regards to the east coast of Florida, and that's our, ninety percent of our territory is wrapped around the beach. Falling trees, we'll talk about some of that as well, the wind, the breeze, we'll talk about pros and cons versus overhead and underground, and at the very end, we'll talk through some of that as well. I think there was some questions about overhead versus underground convergence, but flooding was everywhere, right? So whether you're on the west coast, up north, or even on the south, and that can actually play a big factor when it comes to restoring, restoring power, because sometimes we're not able to get into the actual location and make those actual switches and change out in the water. So what about home? Here's a picture right here, city of Fort Lauderdale, A-1A and La Sova's, so storm surge was everywhere. When the storm was originally coming in, it was a category five, as we know, a lot of people were very scared, including my wife, she reminded me as I was going for many days and weeks, when are you coming home? We have a four and six-year-old, and they were following all the time, but here's a picture of right here in home, in my backyard, there was a lot of storm surge everywhere, and essentially what was happening is with the waves and storm coming in on the west coast, we had a lot of seawall that actually just crumbled, right? So and then some of those waves overtook some of the land and the streets as well. Overhead versus underground. We'll show a couple of videos here as well, but the idea behind that is Broward, Dade, Tri-County, regardless of where you're at, everything was affected, whether it's overhead or underground, and as you can see, underground is not always the best solution, if and when there's trees and vegetation involved. Speaking of trees and vegetation, this is actually right here in Broward County, out west, so as you can imagine, sometimes just getting to those locations to be able to do the work and perform those actual pole installations and working in the rear of the property can be a challenge when you have situations like this. So this year, we also use drones, so we use the drones to actually fly through and see what kind of damage that we have and assess the situation. But essentially what happens is, the county actually produces a list, CIF, which is Critical Infrastructure, and these are the locations where hospitals, the fire, police, 911 centers, we attack those first, and then we actually go through the list of trying to get the most amount of customers on with the greatest amount of people. So here's an example where, you know, ton of trucks are out there working, just trying to get that feeder and that backbone back up so that we can get thousands of customers out at once. Worked around the clock, as we mentioned a little bit before, with the drones and other pictures as well, sixteen, eighteen hour days. We just bought crews back from Puerto Rico as well, as soon as we cleaned up America on this side of the state, to be what, we had crews down there working around the clock, thirty days on, and then every thirty days, we sent them new fresh crews, they had no days off, they were there working around the clock as well. We shipped our equipment, our FPL trucks, manpower, and contractors down there as well. Sometimes the extreme restoration challenges are in the rear of the property, where we set poles, and maybe there's fences and other things that are back there that we can't actually get to at times, but this is an example of how we work, even with cranes, when it comes to setting poles in different locations. Another video here just showing how the crews are working, obviously the idea and the goal was to send everyone home safely, just the way they came into the property, just working around, a quick video there. So, for those that love numbers, I'm a electric engineer by trade, a little bit more about FPL when it comes to Irma versus Irma, we talked about it a little bit before, where it was a category five coming in, landfall, it was actually a four, but here's a little quick breakdown of how the comparisons between the two. I've been on the property and I worked for FPL for fifteen years, I've worked every storm, ice storms in Georgia and North Carolina as well, and they're all kind of different, some are windstorms, some are rainstorms, but this one in particular took out about ninety percent of our customers. So it was very powerful, as you can see, 4.4 million customers were impacted, and all thirty-five counties in our territory was actually impacted as well. We did something called our hardening program, and you may have noticed some of the concrete poles that are going up in the community, larger, stronger, thicker concrete poles, and as you can see, a direct result from 12,400 down to 2500 with regards to the actual pole damage. So it's a huge investment, over $3 billion, and we have to report to the PSC, obviously, we're mandated, but this is something that showed a huge improvement with the new equipment, automatic switches and things of that nature. Little bit more about the two major hurricanes, and we compare those two because of timeframe and the amount of customers that were actually affected. But essentially, now this is to the actual meter can, the way that it works is from the FPL line goes to the customer-owned meter can, and from the meter can on is the customer's responsibility. So, the idea is, this is the area that we were able to provide power. Now if you need an inspection, a permit, work on your side, then that would not be included in that average timeframe. Just another picture of underground versus overhead with regards to vegetation. Does everyone have the FPL app? Can you? Shaking hands? Good. And if you don't, I highly recommend that you do. On the left-hand side, that's just the actual picture, it's a free app, you can actually pay your bill online, if you have an outage, you can actually report the outage, it can give you updates, whether it's a text message, email, or even a phone call, so that you're aware of the crews and route, crews on site working, power they restored by X, Y, Z. You can also pay bills.
Ask a question, Mr.?
Yes, absolutely.
So, as I recall, there was much fuss about, complaints about that, like that screen not conveying correct or accurate information, and I seem to remember, and this is a very broad statement, you'll correct me if it's wrong, that FPL almost kind of admitted that was correct in many instances, so my question is, why did that happen and what has been done to correct the accuracy of these apps and these things that are designed to make things more transparent?
Excellent question. So we rolled that out a week before the storm hit, and what happened? It crashed. Honestly, so what we had to do was, obviously we didn't anticipate the storm, but when they did, with all the phone calls, the emails, and the constant communications, it just crashed, the system crashed, and so we actually scrapped it after the storm and created a brand-new one, and so we're ready and much, much better positioned and prepared for that.
Makes sense, but if the system crashes, that usually means it doesn't convey any information. Why was the system functioning purportedly but just not conveying accurate information?
Right, so, and I kind of mentioned earlier, we have about nine thousand employees, of which about five hundred are IT folks, so we were actually able to work behind the scenes to get up and running enough, but then afterwards, we completely revamped it and have a whole new system in it. Excellent question.
Tim, just to follow up on Jason's question, one of the things that was a big complaint of every mayor in Broward County, and quite a few in Dade County I've spoken to as well, Miami-Dade County I've spoken to as well, is that we couldn't get street-level information. Has that been fixed?
Yes.
That we can get street-level information, because I will tell you, I personally was talking to crews in Lighthouse Point that had trouble tickets for things that had already been fixed, and they didn't have trouble tickets for ones that didn't, and Commissioner Mocker's house was one of those that they had information had been fixed, and they were at another location that had also been fixed, and I pointed out to the pole that went down to Commissioner Mocker Street, and I said, I think that's what's out, and that's probably taken out loss, and the Pike guys sent a crew over there, looked at it, and they were able to get that pole, and that's problem solvable in a matter of two or three hours. Just by happenstance, I happened to be over by Frank Montana Park when I ran into that crew chief. What's being done to get that accurate information, because the iPads failed that everyone was using, the work crews were using, they weren't talking to each other, and they were having to handwrite tickets, is what it came down to, which is obviously not an efficient way of doing things. So what's been done to solve that problem for the next storm?
Excellent, yep, so excellent question, right? So, I think at the beginning, we talked about the twenty-eight thousand different workers on the property, of which FPL has about nine thousand. If you ever take about three thousand are actually crew members that are actually working out in the field. So for the other twenty-five thousand, they don't have our necessary, our systems, iPads, some of these guys came from forty different states, of which, you know, just getting here alone was a challenge for them. So a lot of it was paper, to your point, Mayor, we had to print out maps, and that's always our fallback system for those that do not have our capabilities, but that is a great point, and we did bubble that up, and we were on those calls with you with regard to communication, and that was a huge, huge effort that our CEO took on as far as making sure it's accurate, one, and with the government portal as well, which the electors have a viewpoint of, we made a lot of improvements on that as well. So yes, that was a huge takeaway, and thank you for that feedback, and we were on those calls when we got a lot.
Can you send me the updated links, or send them to Mrs. O, and that way she can share them with the commissioners, because I'm not sure we've all seen that yet.
Okay.
And I've seen some of it, quite honestly, just because I went looking.
Sure.
But, and I pulled up some of the old, and some of the old links I had from Irma don't work anymore, they're broken, they're busted links, so I know there's new stuff out there, and I think it would be helpful if you sent it to Jennifer, and she could share it with myself, the commissioners, Mr. Loviski, if he doesn't have it.
Will do. Yeah, we actually shut down all the Irma information that was online, that we had online before, and we closed all that down, but yeah, it's a great point. Right tree, right place, that's a huge topic of concern as well, I know that the county is looking at that, and there's ordinance for the unincorporated areas, but that's something that we can always use everyone's help on as well, right? So we come out, we trim, you'll see some stats in a minute, over sixteen thousand miles a year that we trim on vegetation, we're not a vegetation company, but we know the importance of making sure that that, because it helps eliminates the outages, the momentaries, the flickering lights and all that fun stuff, but right tree, right place is very important, and there's at times where we've trimmed palms, every three months they'll grow again, but then sometimes it's better just to remove, and that's what we can actually help.
Are you running into issues in Lighthouse Point with removing palm trees that are in the wrong place?
We do have a couple of areas, I know that recently there were some outages of which we've already addressed.
Well, Mr. Chulizzi's sitting right behind you, and I'm sure he is here listening about that, because I know there've been some tree issues on his street, I know on Forty-Eighth Street that you and I spoke about, there's an underground section that has also had some issues. Correct. But are there areas currently that you're finding homeowners in Lighthouse Point are complaining because you need to remove a tree, and they're fighting with your crews about it, and can, when that happens, can you let us know so we can work with you, because we do have a right tree, right place ordinance, and I can tell you, after that last storm, and we saw the number of trees that caused issues, you know, we got to clean it up.
And that's a great point. If and when we do come across a place, because I know that we have a couple of situations right now where we've already approached the homeowner, and we, again, this is a free service that FPL will come out and remove the tree, even trimming, I would say, with the sixteen thousand that we're talking about in the middle, but yes, there are some locations where we need some assistance with removing them, that's free of charge.
I mean, I can go down Twenty-seventh Street right now, and I'll tell, Twenty-seventh Avenue, I'm sorry, Twenty-seventh Street, that's right, first time, right now, and I can show you where there's bamboo that's grown up into the power lines, I can point out. I can point out a bunch of sable palms that have been, that were planted in the wrong place that are in the power lines. And granted, these are not, well, the bamboo probably is on a feeder, the others are on laterals. And it's been reported that FPL, they know about the concern, but they've never done anything about it. But honestly, bamboo is an example, just needs to be leveled and solve that problem, because it is in the main feeder line that goes down that street.
Oh, what's, Alec, I think actually, the vegetation manager, Gregory, he came out about a week and a half ago, he assessed those situations. I know that we have some locations, Forty-Sixth Street, Forty-Fourth Street, and I'm being told those were already trimmed, as well as the dropouts have been replaced for that area. Now, we can definitely follow up if that is not the case, but I was told that they actually removed those, uh, trimmed those trees already, and we can...
Okay, thank you.
No problem. A little bit more just working with our local...
Before you leave poles, there's still a number of poles in the city that are double, not double, there's some of those too, but there's still some that are thirty-degree angles, leaning, that have not been, that we've called in a number of times and still haven't had them straight. And some of them really look like they're going to fall at any moment. Just, do you have a, somebody that could follow up on those poles here in Lighthouse Point that we could get that corrected?
Yes, we do.
Twenty-fifth Street, leaning poles.
Yeah, there's, we'll give, we'll give, we'll probably give an opportunity. Maybe we can address, after the presentation, we'll allow people to speak.
But yes, that's a great point, if and when there are locations where there are leaning, whether it's FPL or even AT&amp;T will identify who's the actual owner on the pole. And if they are double poles, and if they're already cut, right, then we're just waiting on either AT&amp;T, Comcast, or FiberNet to get off the old pole so we can come back in full level. Just working with the local partners at the EOCs, I've worked at the counties, and a lot of my colleagues did as well, just throughout the entire state. But we can't do it alone. This is something that a community effort, and obviously, working with the PSO and all the local elected officials and everyone here. It's a challenge, it really is. But we work through it as a community, and all the partnerships are so important. So if and when there is an issue or a problem, we can identify those and get those corrected. This is just another quick short video during Irma where we turned some more light on. So I think there were some questions as well on Forty-Fifth Streets in the back.
Why don't we, why don't we open it up to the question first, and we'll take some quick input on some areas while we have you here.
Absolutely.
Can't lose the opportunity.
No, no, no.
Commissioners?
I have two questions, really. One isn't related to the hurricane at all, but we don't have any choice here as to who we're going to have for our power company. We have Florida Power and Light. And the question's been asked to me, and I ask it myself, is why do I see commercial after commercial after commercial on TV, on my computer, on the radio for Florida Power and Light? I mean, you've got to be spending a lot of money on those commercials, and we have to have you anyway. So why spend all our money doing commercials to sell us something that you've got, you've got us? Why is that?
So there's fifty-five utilities in the state of Florida.
But not here.
Not in Broward County, correct. But the point is, is when they're showing those commercials, depending on which one specifically you're talking about, but right now, you're going to see a lot of commercials on hurricane season, what they're just starting from June one, running through the end of November. The idea is to make sure everyone aware of what they should be doing, preparing, how to plan ahead, stay ahead. So you're going to see a lot of commercials right now, because this is the time of year when we typically have more than normal, specifically for hurricanes.
I wasn't really talking about commercials telling us what to do. I was telling more about... I was, I was talking more about commercials touting what you did in Irma, showing your trucks coming and fixing the poles and stuff like that. Those were the ones that I had seen prior to hurricane season starting again. I understand you having commercials telling people how to prepare and so on, but anyway. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, of course, is underground power, because I've always been a proponent of that. And I, with the new big concrete poles, which I guess aren't going to ever blow down, but they're so big, and they're really ugly, they've got all these big things on them, which I know, I understand helps you to be able to track exactly where the outages and everything is. When is it ever going to get to the point where you just sort of give up and go for underground power? Because you're, you're getting weaker on that. I mean, at first it was, no, 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 but now you're actually admitting FPL is a, it is a good thing, so.
So there's pros and cons for overhead versus underground?
Right.
Anyone at any given time, if they want underground services, they can actually request that. Now, there's two different situations, one being for overhead and underground conversion for municipalities or cities, right? And that's, if you're going to do that, that will have to be actually approved by the commission, and there is a fee associated with that, right? So typically, it's about a million dollars per mile to go from overhead existing facilities, FPL now, to go underground. Now, within that, you have to also keep in mind that there's an AT&amp;T cost associated with that, Comcast and everyone, whoever's on the pole, right? So that's one. The other option is, there's an underground pilot program that we're just starting now. It's currently under the, under the wraps, and I think you may have seen or heard about it on the sunset.
You said we're number one on that list, right?
That is going to be my next question, where are we on that list?
That's correct. So we do have you lined up for 2019. Everything is still in process and going through that, but we do have some sites. I already identified where the worst-performing areas, if you would, have already been identified, already been field-checked, and they are in line.
So we're a worst-performing area?
No, no, no. As in, within our territory, FPL, we look at who has the most outages, momentaries, issues, right? So we'll attack those first as far as being the overhead and underground conversion pilot.
Okay. How can we be number one on that list and not be the worst area?
Right, so let's back up. Number one on the list as in number one in my heart to make sure that we're...
Oh, your heart, okay, okay, that's different.
You're not number one on the list for worst performing by no means.
Can you explain? I've never heard.
Just finish, because this is all part of it. The last thing is, I know that you can run your lines underground from the poles of the street to the house.
Correct.
Those are, the new houses all do that automatically, but the older houses don't. And every time I've tried to do that to my house, it becomes overwhelmingly difficult, where they've sent me the paperwork, and you have to draw the picture, and then you have to have the trench dug, and then you have to go yourself to Florida Power and Light and pick up your tubing to use, and they said it's like twenty feet long, which I don't know where I would put that in my little car. And then you have to bring it back, and then you have to get FPL, you have to get electrician, you have to get the Comcast, and all of the people at the same time, and it just becomes like a huge project. Why could, and meanwhile, that, if you buried those lines at least, and the homeowner would pay for it, at least it would take that many more lines out of play to blow down in the hurricane off of your great big nice concrete poles. But why can't Florida Power and Light come up with like a package to offer to customers? Like, if you want to at least do this, here, for a thousand dollars, we'll do it for you, or whatever you come up with as a fair charge to do that, and at least get those wires out of the way?
Yep.
But would be the chance of doing something like, of getting something together like that?
So we're regulated by the PSC, and there is a tariff that already exists, and within that tariff, you have to go out and get a certified electrician, you, as in the customer that if you're, if you're requesting this service, right? So once you have that certified electrician, you have to pull a permit, right, to make sure that they can actually do it, whether it's going around a pool or standing away from...
Right, so that's easy, those two things.
Right, so once you have that, that particular electrician is going to have to pull a permit with the city, get approvals, all that fun stuff. From an FPL point of view, right, you're just going to contact the project manager or the engineer for the area. They're going to meet you out there and see what the diameter and the distance is, so they can calculate how much wire and conduit it's going to use. The reason why you have to get the conduit from FPL, because it's approved by FPL and is certified for fire protection and all that fun stuff, whereas the electrician will not have access to our conduit and equipment. So once that's done, then we'll come out and do an overhead, underground conversion, set up an appointment, where we'll disconnect the actual power going to your house, right, so that the electrician can install the conduit, pull in the wire, we'll connect it, and then re-energize it at the end of the day.
But you don't floor it, right? You still have to dig the ditch.
That's up to the electrician, if you want...
Your answer is, your answer is you're not electricians, and you're not in the, FPL's not in the business of, they're not...
No, I didn't expect them to be electricians. I just thought that they could offer something where all of these people would be included as part of it, in order to expedite it and help people out, so that you wouldn't have to be running around trying to draw up plans and things like that. So, no.
So, no, we...
That's the answer.
Yeah, but if you want the service again, with all the steps that we mentioned, and it happens all the time, and the cost is usually around twenty-five hundred, three thousand, depending on, but essentially, what we're doing is going from overhead, we'll disconnect the wire, and then go underground to the actual service.
Can you, I don't know about anything about this pilot program.
Yes.
Can you just tell, like, two minutes on what it actually is? I'd never heard of it.
Absolutely, so prime example of what Commissioner Johnson was talking about, going from the actual FPL pole to the home, right? So right now, example, if it's overhead, we'll come out and make that run go underground, free of charge for the customer. So that's the pilot program to see how that would actually work. We're actually in phase, like I said, the very beginning stages, but towards the end of the year, we're going to start November, December timeframe in the Fort Lauderdale area, and then we'll work our way up north. That's why I said Lighthouse Point is in 2019 timeframe. But the idea is just simply that same conversation. We'll come in, we'll disconnect the overhead, we'll put in the underground conduit, as opposed to you pulling a certified electrician, we'll do all the work to see how that's going to work. Now, that's going to require easements and additional things on the customer end as well, so they'll have to put in those easements, get it from the city, get approvals as well. But that is the program, exactly the program that she's saying, why don't you guys just have a cookie book? That's the program that we're going to pilot.
And are you saying that's going to happen in Lighthouse Point for all the customers in 2019? Might happen?
Not all the customers.
I shouldn't be waiting at my door. I'll have donuts.
Not every customer.
Okay, okay.
Great point.
Tim, so are you saying this is the ones that run from the pole into the house?
Correct.
Okay. And the problem ones would be the ones that probably have excess vegetation and other issues that you're taking repeated calls there, so.
To try to address those first. But again, if you're looking at the feeder overhead, down-the-ground conversion, so if you think about your spine, right, the middle bone there, that portion would be through the city, and that's where you would come in with that approximately a million dollars per mile, if you would. Keep in mind, you have to do the exact same thing for AT&amp;T, Comcast, FiberNet, whoever else is on.
So the million dollars per mile is just the FPL thing?
That's correct, just the FPL thing. After that's done, you're still going to have to do the other portion if you would like it, if not.
And I guess the estimate I've heard is we have over forty linear miles of power lines in Lighthouse Point?
Forty, well, that's including lateral feeders and...
That's what I mean, everything. So then that forty times a million is the base cost, you're saying? Plus AT&amp;T's cost, plus Comcast, plus Fiber...
It'd be a little bit less than that, because that number will strictly be for feeder. So all the laterals that run to the neighborhoods, all the lines that goes to the individual homes would not be included in that million-dollar scheme.
So what about, how do you do the laterals then?
Yeah, that's...
The additional thing?
That's additional.
That's an additional thing?
Correct.
Gotcha. I just think that's extremely important, because I've got neighbors that say it can't be that expensive, crying out loud, get the lines underground. They need to know it's a million dollars a mile on the first pass.
Right, on the first pass.
It's not the linear mile of the city, it's the linear of the lines.
Right, exactly. So you're talking about every household in Lighthouse Point, probably, you know, hundred thousand-plus assessment to do that.
Oh, no, per house? Sure, no, 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 not at, not at all. What was it in Palm Beach?
It was like nine, I want to say it was like...
The city of Palm Beach is ninety-eight million dollars into their project is the last number I got.
Right, and but if they, but they broke it down as to what, I have the paperwork at home, of how much it was per house and how much it was for...
Well, they did a bond issue for sixty million of it, too.
Right. But let's just say if the number, just for rough numbers, if it was fifty million dollars and we had six thousand houses or six thousand residents, it's eighty-three, eighty-three hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was more down in that, in that...
I was telling you, I just did it.
Eighty-three?
Eighty-three.
And FPNL was picking up some of the costs, too.
Right, I was just saying, I was just trying to use, I could have used a hundred, yeah, so then you want to say a hundred and...
One of my, one of my partners lives in Palm Beach, and, okay, eighty-foot lot, and I think they did it by how much frontage you had, that's how they broke it, and I think his was about nine, nine grand, maybe ten grand for his house.
And you do it over twenty years, so it turned out to be...
You had the option of doing it over twenty years or...
Three hundred something dollars a year. I mean, it wasn't a whole lot of money.
I think he had a bond coming up.
Can we ask some of the disadvantages of burying the lies? I know you showed a picture of it being torn up, but wouldn't that be fairly easy to fix? Or what are the other concerns?
Yeah, that's the main concern, vegetation, right? And/or sometimes people dig when they shouldn't be, and/or do not get the eight-one-one for all the locates, and then they find themselves hitting some underground lines.
Are they in conduit?
Yes, they are in conduit.
There's some protection there.
There is definitely protection there, and depending on the actual voltage itself, whether it's one-twenty-two-forty, or it'd be two feet down, but if it's feeder, it'd be over three feet down. So obviously, the further down you go, the less chance you have of someone hitting it. But if I could back up really quick to answer your question, yes, there is about a million per mile, but if you do greater than three-point-one miles of feeder, then you would get a twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent discount from FPL with the overhead, down-the-ground conversion.
It's a bargain.
Take two. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm going to answer all your questions.
It would start, also, the downside, you know, we've heard about saltwater intrusion, if the area is flooded or still under, you know, fairly wet soil, that you have problems getting to the issue, is there ways of bypassing it? Or, you know, I'm trying to figure out the concerns, because it would seem to me, as we, over the years, have heard about this, that that would have been the easiest thing to do. But there's got to be something bigger just than the cost, because you keep reinvesting more dollars into the strengthening of, you know, with cement poles, heavier wires, whatever you're doing.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is, too, keeping in mind that we're regulated by the PSC, and so the PSC has mandated that overhead lines are the preferred method because of cost and everything associated with that. But to your point, outside of the fact of maybe some vegetation that pulls it up, it's pretty safe and it's pretty good as far as, without damage, once it's underground and the conduit, pretty safe, and it lasts for many, many years underground.
How much does it cost for the hardening so far in Lighthouse Point that you've been doing?
I don't know the exact number for Lighthouse Point. I know that we spent over three billion dollars throughout the entire state, but that's because of the five thousand-plus smart devices that we have. Smart devices in the sense of the blue meter can at the residential home, it actually communicates to FPL and let us know when there's an outage. It communicates and tell, hey, we're about to have a failure. It actually also put in trouble tickets automatically, so that you don't necessarily have to call them. Those are some, I mean, the other ones are automatic switches, so if and when a line goes down, the sections can actually switch off and have this, this particular portion still on, that's on, so we can isolate the area of concern. And that's without a crew or a truck even rolling out there. So there's a lot of great different devices that are out there already in the field as a result of that.
Any further questions? Studio audience?
Or, or which, perhaps, maybe, would you mind sticking around and addressing-
I don't wanna add that to me.
No, addressing, maybe they can-
Or, or, I, I was gonna say, since Tim's here, uh, if we, if they'd let, if any of the public and Tim's willing to do it, maybe he can meet with them right outside here.
That's what I was, that's what I was-
Have a chat with them and then understand-
We could do that, that's fine.
Well, I'm thinking that way you can explain the problem directly to him.
And we won't take anybody else's time as long as it's fine.
That's fine?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say something.
Thank you, Detective.
I just wanted to say, Tim, you know, it's funny, he was mentioning all the new updates,
and I see it a lot in the field, the fire department, it is pretty amazing what they're able to do from when I started in the fire service eighteen years ago, on how they're able to start to locate and basically secure some of this power. It's, it's been, it's neat, I mean, obviously, it's, it's only in small little pockets, but it's definitely getting there to the point where we, we do see the investment that they're making in some of the feeder lines specifically that we've been dealing with, so it's pretty interesting.
And I happen to have two of those beautiful new concrete poles in my front yard, so they're real, they're really attractive. My wife wants to paint them, so we can add-
I think it'd be a good painting job.
Putting a mural on it or something like that. Tim, I do have one other question for you, and, uh, and John and I have talked about it a few times, uh, where do we stand on the hardening of the power to our fire station?
Yes.
We've talked about that a few times since the hurricane and the like, and, uh, that is the only critical infrastructure building that we have in the city that's on a residential line, believe it or not. So, what do we need to do to get that done? Because we were trying to get it done before the start of hurricane season, obviously it didn't happen. Um, I know there's issues because of the way, where that power line runs in from, but where do we stand on getting that done?
So, and, and that's a great point. We did meet with Dwight Quonbo, he's the engineering lead on that, and their team has already designed that particular job, so it's just a matter of getting that in the queue and getting it executed. So, I'll definitely raise that and get some dates for your hard dates, because I know we did talk about trying to get that done beforehand. I know that vegetation went out there and trimmed that line over there as well, and we made some changes. We did some switching, but to get that on there, we'll hear honestly, because to your point, that is a brand-new hardened line out there, so point taken very well.
Yeah, because that, obviously, going into hurricane season, you know, we don't wanna have to deal with what we did last year where, you know, City Hall kept power on, uh, fire, police kept fire, power on, and the fire station was dead in the water.
Right.
So.
Commissioner Long, you have another question?
Yeah, one of your questions is just kind of a statement, is we look back after, what, you know, six, eight months, and we're all so up in arms about the power and vegetation when we cleaned up, when you kind of sit back and realize the enormous tasks for power companies, for municipalities, for waste haulers and everything else, I mean, it was pretty amazing. As much as we are uncomfortable without air conditioning and debris in our streets, just the work that was done by so many people, and, you know, all of the, the service people throughout the state of Florida, but, you know, when you look at the, the debris, it was never fast enough, but it was pretty remarkable at how quickly our city got cleaned up and, and back to a fairly normal, um, day-to-day existence. So, I do have to hand it to you and, you know, our city and all everybody else, because it wasn't easy. Glitches over there, no doubt about it, and, Tim, I called you from all over the United States chasing you down, and, you know, you were, you were there when you couldn't.
It wasn't like Bell having barbecue, I heard that, I don't know.
They were talking great about you over there.
I just found out the prices, 'cause I looked at the article on the, on my phone that I have at home. In Palm Beach, it's eleven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars per house and three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, oh, that's per year, eleven-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars per house and three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars per year per condo for twenty years. It's not related to how much your frontage is of your house. They charged it by house versus condo, and that's for twenty years.
Yeah, Gulfstream has a similar project going on, and they're paying com- similar prices.
So, it's like a hundred dollars a month for a house and whatever that is, forty or something for a condo.
Twenty thousand dollars.
All right, if you could step outside and-
Thanks, Tim.
You might have a line, and then you'd have a time at the end of the meeting too, for anybody, if you wanna bring the issue to our attention, so we can note it and make sure it's followed up with, there's a time at the end of the meeting for that. But Mr. Ogden's is gonna stick around and meet with people after.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Ogden.
See you, Jim.
Um, so we'll now move on to unfinished business. Um, item one is consider motion to cancel regular City Commission meeting of August fourteenth, twenty-eighteenth. Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the City Commission, you previously, uh, voted to cancel the, uh, July twenty-fourth meeting, and you wanted to defer any consideration as we got closer to whether you wanted to cancel August fourteenth, so that there's appropriate time for the city clerk to advertise if you do make a decision to do that, so it's here for your consideration. Um, this evening, um, currently, as you sit here tonight, there is no item scheduled for that meeting. It does require a return of the vote of no less than four of you to cancel a meeting, so we return it to you to decide whether you want to, uh, cancel that first meeting in August.
I'll talk on it, 'cause I spoke on it the last time, and, um, I, the last time I was in favor of canceling it, but, and I'm still in favor of canceling it, but what I was thinking of in, in defense of canceling it is, A, uh, there's nothing on the agenda, B, we give our people on our staff that live far away a break for another meeting, but also, I would think that we are all gonna be extremely involved with meetings over the next two or three months in smaller groups with people trying to personally present our bond issue once we get our PowerPoint thing, uh, up and running, and I would think it's much more important use of our time to go out into the community, into our community and talk with our residents, even if it's one-on-one or small groups, than to come here for a meeting that we don't really have anything on the agenda. I mean, I wouldn't mind going out every night of the week to try and talk to people and, you know, with the bond, and I'm sure you all feel the same way, in your different social groups that you're in, and your different civic groups, and so on and so forth, so in favor of canceling it, I would say, let's make better use of our time and go out there and, uh, uh, you know, sell our bond issue. That's my feeling.
Educate.
Pardon me?
Educate.
Yeah, okay, yeah, educate, right, exactly. Inform, inform and educate.
Commissioner, Dan Busker?
Uh, I think that I stand with the idea that, you know, I, I look at the fact that we have so few meetings, uh, and we are going to have to educate on the bond issue that comes up. I, I think that, I believe, I don't know, was Commissioner Long or Commissioner Joff mentioned an informative class by our city attorney to make sure that we are educating in a legal and proper manner, so I, I, I have no problems with getting together, at least having this discussion for this, or some sort of continued education, I mean, but if, we're not gonna have people, I know that most people have made plans, and we do have staff that makes plans, so I'm still torn between the two, but again, before I go out and educate, I prefer at least some knowledge, I wanna make sure that I'm saying the right things. So, the fourteenth comes back as a date that we could easily get together and be educated on how to present the information to this, that we could present as commissioners.
I will not be here on the fourteenth, so if we are gonna have a presentation, I prefer, I would like to be here, so, uh, I would suggest we're gonna have that meeting, that presentation, we do it prior to our regular meeting on the twenty-eighth of August.
I'm agnostic. I- Commissioner, yeah, I mean, put it on, I, I, I listen to everybody here, and as one who's been here for a few times, like almost everybody here now, um, let's not have a meeting just to have a meeting. And if we don't really have anything to do, you can absorb it in other meetings, um, 'cause I know for a while, like, well, there's so many meetings that we had, and this and that, and it was canceled fifty-two percent, you know, all sorts of numbers that really weren't even that relevant. Um, but in this particular case, it costs a lot of money to have staff here, um, either in downtime or away from their family and other things, just for the sake of saying we had a meeting. Now, I agree with Glenn, if you're gonna do it, I don't even think, hey, it should be more than probably a twenty, thirty-minute presentation at best-
No, I would, I agree.
To say, how do you do this? You know, I, we went through it before, and it was, you know, for the most part, my take on it was, you don't speak to, particularly on behalf of the commission, but your feelings on it, and you can explain what you believe are the good and bad parts of it. I did it the other day in front of probably fifteen parents who, we sat right by the toddler lot, where's Becky, she's, there she is, okay, and talking about it, and talking about what the civitan building could look like, and Public Works, and the Fire Department, and what we're doing. I mean, that's fairly easy to do. I don't know if we need a meeting for that, especially a special meeting where you're gonna have, you know, our staff here. Um, I'd rather just say, go ahead, cancel a meeting, but if that is that important and we have to do it, let's set a time today on when we're gonna incorporate that into our regular meeting.
I understand there's scheduling issues. I believe we should, we should be meeting, particularly with many big things on the agenda, so I'm gonna vote no on this, and the motion is brought. Um, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Johnson, I really do, about using the time elsewhere. I think it's not, let's not forget, let's be realistic about this, our agenda is set by administration, and just because administration says there's nothing to be done, I know Commissioner Law, uh, Van Busker always has a list of stuff that we've been, you know, haven't addressed or brought up. We could fill that agenda with stuff that is for the betterment of the residents of Lighthouse Point, so, let's just not assume there's nothing to be done. I don't like saying that, 'cause there's always something we could be doing for the residents. Um, again, that being said, people have plans, I'm more than happy to move my schedule to make that meeting happen at a date that's more convenient for everybody, so we meet twice. So, that, to me, is my attempt to try and compromise, um, but, you know, it's, it's the will of the commission that'll prevail, but, uh, I'm, I'm a no on canceling August fourteenth with the, with the idea that we could meet the meeting to make sure we have a quorum here, and we could discuss at the next meeting, let's call it open-mic night, what do commissioners wanna, you know, what do commissioners wanna discuss at that meeting? We could talk about fixing the drive-through ordinance that we've never addressed, that's been sitting out there. There is stuff we could be doing, and so that would be my request, but the floor is open to the commissioners to, um, to address the situation.
I, again, I, I go back to the fact is, is that we do have stuff out there. I, I'd be interested in saying, like, uh, Commissioner Joff said, that we move the date to, to something later in the month, or something at a different time, because I do think that our open, I guess the terminology, open-mic night, but again, I, I come back to the fact is that there's always something we could put there, but if, if we're not gonna have a quorum for that evening, then we're not gonna have a quorum, I understand that also. And there's no sense of putting something together if we're not gonna have enough people here.
I do have to say that every, that I know of, every collegial, every governmental body just about of Broward County has two meetings off in the summertime, so I don't see, think that we have so many things more important than everybody else that we can't put them on another agenda. I mean, if there's other things, we can put them on the August, what would it be, the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, we have an August twenty-eighth meeting.
Right, I mean, you, you know, we've had a lot of extra meetings, so it's not like we're shorting meetings, because we've had our extra meetings on Saturday mornings and coming in early for, to discuss things, so we're not trying to hide from having meetings for any sense, but, you know, it's nice to give our staff and, and even us, a chance that you can actually take four weeks and do something without having to feel a big guilt thing because I might have to miss, miss the commission meeting.
I would argue we're spending way too much time on this, let's vote.
The motion first. I'll make a motion to, uh, cancel the August fourteenth meeting.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Motion passes, four one. Thank you for calling the question, Vice President Mocker.
My pleasure.
We'll move to agenda item number three, uh, new business item, number two on our agenda, discussion on the renewal of the solid waste and recycling collection agreement with Waste Management. Um, before we engage in that item, um, I'm going to, even though I don't know what will happen tonight based on this topic, I'll, I'm gonna announce a conflict as I've done before. Um, as I've said, my wife does the legal work for Waste Management, so I'm going to leave this in the capable hands of four well-versed commissioners, a mayor, a city attorney, and a city administrator, so I will pass the gavel to Commissioner Mocker, and, uh, keep my mouth shut for a change. Everybody, welcome.
Who's gonna discuss this?
John.
Commissioners, uh, the city's agreement with Waste Management, you know, for, you know, for solid waste and recycling expires thirty September of this year. It was a five-year agreement, uh, and it also has two, three-year renewal options, so we contacted Waste Management, you know, to talk about renewing the contract, and, um, I put, uh, I included Waste Management's proposal, uh, in your package. Currently, we're paying just under thirty-two dollars a month for residential service, and Waste Management is proposing an increase of up to fourteen dollars a month, uh, to keep the same level of service. There's also, uh, an alternative method of collection, uh, the automated cart system, um, they proposed that, and that, that could increase the rates up to four dollars, uh, per month. And again, it'd be a change of service. And, and Waste Management right now gives us a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for administrative fee and for recycling, and they would continue to do that, and they also pay for our twenty-two thousand dollars a year for hazardous waste recycling. The one thing Waste Management is proposing though is, uh, right now, our recycle processing is part of our agreement, and, and the whole business of recycling has changed, and, and they would want a separate agreement for recycling processing, not, not picking up the, the recycling from the city and taking it to the, uh, taking it to the processing plant, but the actual processing of the recycling and then selling it. Right now, there is no, there's no money in recycling, actually, we lose money on recycling. So, Luigi-
Maybe financial money, though, the environment doesn't.
Well, I'm, no, I'm-
I just wanna preface the time that the environment doesn't.
I'm as green as anybody.
Stelling that out there.
Yes, sir. Luigi Pace is here from, uh, Waste Management, and if you have any questions for him, because we're gonna be looking for direction, um, on whether we continue with Waste Management, or you want us to continue negotiating with Waste Management? If you wanna look at a different level of service, or we put it up to bid, so, uh, everything is, everything's on the table.
All right, Commissioners, you wanna listen, have, uh, questions for the representative from Waste Management that's here?
Hi, I have.
Good evening.
Are you gonna make a presentation first?
No, I'm here to answer any questions if I-
No, I mean, if you're gonna have a presentation first, I'll-
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Luigi Pace for Waste Management.
Um, I, I was looking at the two separate things here, and I was just wondering, um, a ninety-six gallon cart, isn't that awfully heavy? Isn't that awfully big? What, what are our carts now that we have? Are they forty-eight?
Sixty-four and forty-eight.
Sixty-four?
The small ones are forty-eight, yes.
Seventy-four, eight, that's almost, that's, if that's full, that's gonna be pretty heavy to drag from the back of your house out to the street, isn't it?
That depends on the person, ma'am.
Well, like me, I'm old.
My mother-in-law, before she passed, was seventy-five years old, and, you know, if the kid didn't take it out, she'd walk it to the curb, and we're a household of five.
And what is, are those trucks set up that they only can pick up the ninety-six gallons? That's why the increase in the size of the can?
They can also collect the sixty-four and the forty-eight.
But it wouldn't be for this price if we went to, if we said, okay, we'll do the loader truck, but it'll be for sixty-four gallon instead of-
You'd have to determine what size container you would like to have the residents to use. Ninety-six is pretty much standard for solid waste, uh, to accommodate that, um, but that would be your choice.
And, um, do we, we have something that lawn people are not supposed to put, uh, landscape services are not supposed to put their things at the curb, right, that they're supposed to take it away?
Correct.
And that's a big problem. I know on my street, it's a huge problem, the landscapers come and they trim all these beautiful vegetations that people have, and they make piles this high, and then they don't take it away, and then you guys take it away, and then we get stuck with this huge vegetation valley, where really, anytime, basically, in Lighthouse Point, you see a pile of trimmings, this big, I'm pretty sure that the professionals done that, that, and so I just wonder if we can't do something to cut that down some more.
We, we try, when we catch them in the act, a lot of times, we find it to, after the fact, and all the residents care about is getting it out of their front yard, is what it comes down to. Um, I can tell you personally, I cleaned out my yard a couple weeks ago, and I had a pretty good pile, just cleaning out palm trees and weeds and stuff like that, all on my own, so, uh, it's hard to say unless you catch them in the act, who did it.
I had a huge pile Sunday, and that was just-
I, I know.
Part of my lawn.
But I, you know what I mean, but you see these certain houses, and you know the people aren't there climbing up their palm trees, cutting these things.
Michael, yeah, um, you're proposing to go up approximately fourteen dollars a month. It's what, like a forty-five percent?
45%.
45% increase to provide the same service you've been servicing for us for how many years?
Five years. I just contracted for years before that.
And even within the five-year contract, you had cost increases.
Just smaller, smaller.
Yeah, so that was built in. I know as long as I've been here, there's been that push to go into less staff, more of the front loaders, basically have our people, our residents. We got rid of the underground, which for many people, they enjoyed that because you're doing the front door, back door service. We got rid of that, so then we went into dragging it all down, which is just a lot more work. And then we went into now for recycling with the, what size ones are the recycling, Joe?
64.
64, 48. So, my concern has always been with some of our older people and the fact that they don't always fill it to the top, and it does bounce around a lot of it, or they keep it there for two and three weeks because they don't have enough to do it, so they don't bring it down. It's unsightly, they're loud. I don't like those type of containers, especially for our population, because trying to drag it down over the grass and other areas to put it on the curb so it's going to fit is problematic. I certainly don't like your other plan to do the, or adding the collection days, especially on a Saturday. I think that is a time that we have enough noise already in our city. I don't think having the garbage trucks go up and down our roads, especially when we have a lot more kids, a lot more walkers, a lot more people out in the community and on the streets to be trying to jockey around a garbage truck. Not sure why you felt it would work better to add a day there, but, you know, you already got Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday that you're on the road. You know, I'm trying to figure out why you're jumping up 43% other than the fact, and I've been here long enough, this is how it's worked in the past, where you try and put the price up so high that you force us to take the alternative suggestion. Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to force you to take the alternative. It's just, as we were getting ready, looking at the service, realized, okay, you know, the price in order to, for me to get it approved would have to go up. So, that's why I looked at the other option of the carts, to see what can I present. So, it wouldn't just be, here, this is something for, you know, up to $14 increase with no other option. So, I went and looked at another option. That's what I presented, to say, okay, you know, there's a possibility we could do this, the impact is not going to be as great, and it's a service that we provided in other parts of the county, and we provided it pretty well. So, that was the only reason I put that second option in there, just because I understand, I understand the price challenge of the first option for as-is is hard. Explain to me, and again, we've always, I know Tony always calls it the Cadillac of service, and we took pride in that. And the fact is, and we haven't both picked up, that we're not like Fort Lauderdale, that the stuff will sit out there for three weeks, four weeks at a time before it gets picked up, and, you know, you can only put your palm trees out certain days. We take pride in the fact that our city is always clean. But to go 45% over a year, I'm trying to figure out what's the reason for that. The main driver is the bulk situation here in the city. You've got roughly 4,100 units for the service, and they're producing almost 5,000 tons of bulk a year. That's a crazy amount of volume. And that's not covered in the current structure that we have. So, we've always had that issue in the city. And now it's come to the situation where I can't get it approved. I couldn't come make that agreement and make you an offer without making that change, Commissioner. Well, how much better can you work to maintain the same service? I'm sorry? What's the best price you can do with that, with creating the same, providing the same service you're doing that? 45% doesn't make sense in any marketplace. Understood. And that's, that's the number that I have, Commissioner. Because at that point, things start looking at rebidding this thing out to other providers. We've been with you for years. Yes, sir. And I hate to even go down that path, but I understand. It's definitely not what we're trained for, it's not what we want to do. Tony, I've been working with Tony forever. We don't want to stand up here and even consider going down that path. If I had something better to give you, I would. 45%, and then your, your second alternative is just unacceptable to me, especially knowing what our residents want, as well as the capabilities, the physical capabilities of some, many of our residents. And I was just looking the other day when I had just a few things in my recycling can, and the thing bounces back and forth until it almost falls over. Now, if I'm an 80-year-old woman, a little more frail than I happen to be, I can see that as even a bigger problem.
Alright, Kyle wanted to speak.
I think Mike actually hit it kind of on the head, but I just want to say, I was just, I think you guys did a great job in your service. And I've actually called before and thanked you for doing some of the stuff that your guys have done, picking up trash and doing what I can see as a right thing and a, and a, you know, a company-conscious employment, which is great. However, though, when, as we see this $14 a month is obviously, it's going to be unacceptable. I don't think that anybody up here is going to allow that to happen. So, I think that coming here with the, and only one option, unfortunately, I think that was a poor choice, because if there's a bulk issue, then maybe we need to look at maybe going to one day, a week instead of, because I know we have it twice per week currently per thing, as a possibility. I mean, there's got to be some sort of cost savings in there, obviously. I still think that.
Kyle, the problem is volume. So, if you went to one day a week, you'd still have the same volume, it would just be sitting around longer. It's a volume issue, he was saying.
Well, I, right, and I understand that, but I think that at least if we have some other options, because we have two options, and neither of which are, I think, are even plausible. The mere fact of getting a 96 quart can, or gallon can, a cart is ridiculous. I mean, and ultimately, and I hate to say it, on some levels, if you have a party or you have something at your house and you overfill that can, and so you say, well, they're not going to take it this week, now what do you have to do? You have to store trash on the side of your house and hope next week you don't have it. I mean, listen, I have a little bit bigger family than some folks, but we do have a lot of large families in the city, and 96-gallon can just doesn't seem like sometimes that it's going to be sufficient enough to cover a weekend of having friends over and having some dinner out. So, I just think that if, as far as I'm concerned, it's unacceptable, and we need to go back up for bid. We need to go to bid for this.
I want to say one more thing. I want to join with Kyle, was I love Waste Management. I love Tony, and I love Waste Management, and you've done a wonderful job for us. If any little thing happens, all you have to do is pick up the phone, somebody fixes it immediately, you come almost every day of the year, and so, you know, we really, really like your service. But.
Thank you.
That being said, I just wonder if the major problem is our 5,000 tons of bulk, how the second choice here, which would only cost an extra $4 a month using the automatic cart, that doesn't address the bulk, which you seem to say was the major part of the problem.
The offset in the additional labor helps cover that cost.
So, the additional labor, even though you're going to be doing it six days a week and paying labor six days a week would.
But it's only one driver, as opposed to having two people in each truck, two driver, driver teams. So, the savings in labor is huge.
Two drivers for, yeah, that's eight drivers a week, close to.
I'll make a quick comment, and then we're going to move on.
Yes, sir.
I agree with everybody. We love the service, Waste Management. Not only is the service tremendous, the people are so good, they're so kind. Every one of your delivery guys, pickup guys, they're super. Way, they're friendly, they're helpful, they're accommodating. The issue we have, I think, is a responsibility to look at other options, because I think to ask our residents to pick up a 45% increase, it bestows upon us a responsibility to go see if there's another solution that we ought to look at. Maybe there isn't, but we probably owe it to ourselves, too.
Understood, absolutely.
So, nothing against the quality of your service, just this percentage of increase is.
Oh, I understand.
Pretty hard to swallow. So. I want to make, what do, you need a motion?
I'll make one suggestion.
Go ahead, Mike.
And John, you can tell me about the time thing. Why don't we give them two weeks to come back with a better proposal?
We've already done that.
Done that?
Okay. We've done it, said it can't do it. John and I have met with Luigi, very good meeting, but at the end of the day, he got back to John last Wednesday and said, can't do anything.
So, what do we do here, then? Just put it up for bid?
My preference is to put it up for an RFP, but we wanted to give the Commissioner a chance to discuss it with Luigi.
Do we need to vote on this? I mean, I think the consensus is we're in agreement.
Administration can do that.
Okay.
I'd like to make one comment. Waste Management has agreed, if we don't have a new contract with another vendor, by October 1st, they'll continue doing the service until we get a vendor. We should be able to make October 1st, but, you know, things happen. We'll always have garbage service.
You wouldn't have to worry about it.
Alright, well, let's give that a shot.
And we've enjoyed working with you guys, you know, I think we all.
We still want to.
We want to, but.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the kind words, and I'll take those back. I really will. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mocker, if I can make one more comment?
Sure.
On the recycle processing, that's a separate issue, and Coral Springs and Deerfield Beach put out a separate RFP for recycle processing, and they got zero bids. I don't know if you've been hearing.
Right.
The whole thing is kind of a flux. We can continue with Waste Management for our recycle processing, which seems like a very reasonable price compared to other vendors.
That's going to be a separate contract.
That'd be a separate contract for recycle processing. They would just process the recycling and then sell it.
That sounds reasonable. So, if you would then, I think the consensus of the Commission, not including Jason, who is to rescind discussion, is to prepare an RFP.
And the same level of service that we have.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should, same level of service and optional, other options for service, too. Because if we don't like the answer, we get the same level of service, why would we want to rebid it then for a different level of service? So, maybe it should be.
More of an all-a-cart menu?
An all-a-cart menu. Pick A, B, and C, and then.
As comprehensive as we can.
Yeah, but I, I think by the same token, the cost of the bulk is a significant driver, and I don't know how we get that down without, you know, just citing residents every time code, or the police catch someone with a guy out front.
You've got to be realistic.
But it's going to be hard to do. It's not going to really, it's a tough thing to do, because you've got to catch them in the act, because they're just going to say, oh, yeah, I did that this over the weekend.
Alright, then I think you've got your direction, John.
Sir.
Return the gavel to.
And Luigi, if you change your mind and you come up with a better offer before the RFP goes out, you know, we can always tell the Commissioner that on a job like that. Right.
Thank you, Luigi.
Thanks, Luigi. Have a good time, words, and I'll make sure to get those back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, you're chewing on that edge so much.
Yeah.
I got to speak, I got to speak. New business item number three, consider authorizing the expenditure of federal, state forfeiture funds for the purchase of law enforcement equipment and law enforcement operations. Chief Licata.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, we have monies in our state and federal contraband fund. I'm here tonight to make our annual request for you to consider authorizing the expenditure of federal, state forfeiture and contraband funds for the purchase of law enforcement equipment and for law enforcement operations. I'm requesting that the City Commission authorize the expenditure of funds in the amount of $199,886.87. Can you rephrase that? An amount up to $199,886.87. The funds will be used to purchase law enforcement equipment and capital items that include vehicles, emergency equipment for new police vehicles, body armor, replacement of duty firearms, holsters, tasers, digital radar science, and replacement of LPR cameras and processors. In addition, fees for ongoing programs and the allocation of funds for overtime, training, and for employee development. I've provided you with a detailed spreadsheet which spells out what the expenditures are for the upcoming year, and I just want to reiterate, as I have in years past, that the amount of money that we're asking for isn't necessarily the amount of money that we're going to spend. As an example, last year, I believe, we asked for $46,000 for LPR equipment. We only had to replace two cameras, so our cost was $16,000, not $46,000. And we asked for $25,000 contingency. There has not been any contingency, so we haven't spent that $25,000. I'm asking for the amount I just suggested, but that's not necessarily the amount that we're going to be spending, and we wouldn't go over that amount without coming back to the Commission.
And you come back to us for most of these things anyway?
I'm sorry?
You come back with a lot of these things anyway, don't you?
Only for items that are $20,000.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, the financial impact is $199,886.87, which will come entirely from the federal forfeiture and state contraband funds. So, tonight, I'm requesting the City Commission approve the expenditure of federal and state contraband and forfeiture funds in the amount of up to $199,886.87 for the purchase of law enforcement equipment and for law enforcement operations. One last thing. Two of the items that are on our list, the firearms and the tasers, I don't want to wait until October to make that purchase because we're having some service warranty and safety issues with those devices, and there's a backorder on some of them. We need to move forward with putting it in order for those items now rather than waiting until October 1st. So, that's my request.
That's for the Glock, the Glock mines.
The blocks, the holsters, that.
Well, that's a pretty good price when you divide that out.
No, it's a great price. Well, I'm going to address that in a, in a later agenda item, which has to do with.
Will we summon officers who want to supply their own weapons?
I'm sorry, no, for declaring firearm surplus. We have firearms that we're currently using, and we have other firearms that are in our inventory that we haven't used in a long time. We're going to surplus those, trade them to the law enforcement vendor that we're getting our new firearms from. And our net out-of-pocket is about $650 for firearms that would cost otherwise $15,000.
Yeah, that's amazing.
And those, that's the thing you want right now?
Yeah.
Locks, yeah, okay.
It's amazing. You guys went back to nines.
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, actually, there have been studies done, the FBI actually, that nationwide study that will deny, a lot of police departments are, firearms come with an ambidextrous grip, they're not as much kick, they're more accurate for law enforcement. So, that, we put a lot of thought into making that change. And the rounds that are used and the new weapons are compliments.
Commissioner Long, you had something?
Yeah, just because some of these things are just low dollars, and we can do it in this year's budget. I'd like to make the suggestion and then move with the motion, if it's okay with the Commissioners, that we move ahead and take the glocs off of this for $647.50 and take that out of our general operating dollars. The GT distributors for the existing firearm holsters and mag purchases, $5,000, $82 and change, as well as pricing plans, the one of five-year pricing plan of $3,600 for the tasers, and just get those now, get them out of the way, and then we can still save some money for federal forfeiture funds for a later date. And then, the motion would be, if that's acceptable to you, remove those from the item and then move the remaining total up for the federal forfeiture funds for the 2018, 19 fiscal year.
Thank you.
Those three items are less than $10,000.
Yeah, I give our, I guess, I mean, City Administration doesn't see any issue with that.
Less than $10,000, and.
You're okay with that, Chief?
Yes.
Holsters, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I mean, do you guys understand my motion?
Yeah, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes five zero, with certain items discussed to be removed from forfeiture and moved to be paid immediately out of operating funds for this fiscal year.
Correct.
Thank you, Chief. You're still up?
You got a lot.
Item four, waive the bid process and authorize the approval of the maintenance contract with NDI Technologies to service the agency camera, 44-camera license plate recognition system.
Okay, Commissioners, as you know, we have had a very longstanding relationship with NDI Technologies dating back to 2009. We made an initial investment of over a quarter of a million dollars, and have since purchased 13 additional cameras for almost $200,000. This particular vendor designed and installed our system. They provide remote management of our system. We use them to replace equipment when it comes out of warranty and is no longer serviceable. They integrate new cameras with our equipment. They provide warranty on our existing LPR cameras and, and associated equipment. They established a local office here in Lighthouse Point, right across from our city on Federal Highway, to provide us with first-class service. They serve the entire South Florida area, but because we're one of their best customers, you know, they provide that personalized service and have an office right here in our area. I did look into transitioning to a new company. It would be a significant cost for new cameras, for new servers and associated equipment, and I obtained some competitive pricing if we were to buy the same equipment we get from NDI when we have to replace our cameras and processors. And we're still getting pricing from back in 2010 from NDI because they want to use us, showcase our system, they send other customers to us. And we've had such tremendous success and a great relationship with them that the pricing is, it's certainly advantageous for us to stay with them. So, the financial impact is $25,032 utilizing the police department federal forfeiture funds. That price has been consistent for six or eight years. They have not increased the price on us. I recommend the City Commission waive the bid process and authorize the approval of the maintenance contract with NDI Technology for the service of our 44-camera license plate recognition system and authorize the expenditure of funds. We just recently uppaid that maintenance program in April, so it's not due until next April.
The Chair is. It's a no-brainer to me, and unless there's any questions, I would make a motion to waive the bid process and authorize approval of the maintenance contract with NDI.
It's supposed to be unanimous, right?
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes five zero. Item six, oh, I'm sorry, item five, waive the bid process and approve purchase of replacement of 20 tasers, holsters, and associated equipment and declare 20 tasers surplus property. Our, our, Chief, you begin, is going to address this.
Okay. Commissioners, we're asking that you waive the bid and approve the purchase of a replacement of 20 X26P tasers, holsters, and associated equipment, and declare 20 X26 tasers currently in our inventory as surplus property. We've been utilizing tasers in our police department since 2004. It's a less lethal use-of-force option that assists our officers in dealing with combative violent and aggressive people and has provided significant results in preventing influence to police officers and people of the general public and those that we deal with in police encounters. We currently have 29 tasers that we use in the police department. 20 of those tasers are over five years old, no longer under manufacturer's warranty, and the manufacturer no longer services, repairs these devices. But more importantly, and the reason why we're moving forward with the replacement of these tasers, is that they no longer provide their product liability insurance certificate to agencies fielding tasers that are now expired. We had been using them beyond the five years, as long as they worked, we were using them, but this is a game changer. The fact that they're not providing that liability insurance, in the event that something happens, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that equipment falls within the certified and warranty period. So, they have a new five-year pricing plan. Year one is $3,600. Year two through five would be $5,600 a year. We're proposing those funds. I think you just voted to pay the $3,600 from this year's general fund budget, but the remaining funds would come from subsequent forfeiture. general fund budget, but the, the remaining funds would come from subsequent forfeiture budgets starting in year two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the total financial impact is twenty-six thousand dollars from the police department forfeiture account, less the thirty-six hundred this year. So I'm requesting that the city commission waive the bid process and authorize the purchase of twenty X-twenty-six P tasers and associated equipment, utilizing Axum Enterprise's five-year pricing plan and to declare twenty of our X-twenty-six tasers as surplus property.
Commissioners, discussion through five?
If there's not any discussion, I would offer a motion to waive the bid process.
There's, one thing, Earl, um, one thing you might, we might want to think about is years two through five, that's, I guess, the warranty on them. Uh, in other words, to keep them in service if something goes wrong, we send them, so that's the fifty-six hundred dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's twenty-six thousand.
So it's a total of thirty-six hundred first year, correct?
Which you already just approved.
I mean, just clarify, um, it, it is thirty-six hundred dollars for year one and then fifty-six hundred dollars year two through five, so it's each year fifty-six hundred.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
But, so it's set, Adam?
Yes.
So we would pay that each and every year?
That's correct.
Or we wouldn't pay it all upfront?
Right. Now, one, one other caveat, we, we still have nine tasers that, uh, are under warranty. Eight of them fall off warranty next year. So I'm going to be back asking for the same plan for those nine additional tasers in addition to the twenty that's replaced.
We lose the insurance on those nine?
Yes, sir.
Then it will be the same pricing?
Yes, I, well, I assume so.
But we don't know right now.
I don't have that crystal ball either, but, um, I, I would think that it would be pretty close to price. And that's going to be in addition to what I'm asking for.
I understand, what I'm trying to understand, Ross, and I'm sorry, I didn't pay attention to this this closely when I got my packet. So, we're talking about an additional nine at a hundred and eighty dollars apiece. So, Paul?
But that's later on in the year.
Right, so, but, yeah, but, yeah, we're talking about another sixteen hundred twenty dollars doing math.
Well, it's not a hundred and eighty dollars apiece, they're like thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay, we're paying a hundred and eighty dol...
That's the plan.
No, the first year it's a hundred and eighty dollars, according to this invoice here.
This is the plan, I can agree with you, right?
Hard work.
It's a twenty, twenty units, twenty units, twenty tasers.
At a hundred and eight.
A hundred and eighty.
Is the thirty-six hundred for the first year. And then the subsequent years are twenty at two eight per year.
Yes, correct.
So we're talking about another sixteen hundred twenty dollars. So the question is, should we contract with them now to buy twenty-nine of these, that will take delivery of twenty now and pay for twenty now, and then pay for the other nine now so you don't have to come back next time, and we just do this all once? And we lock in the price now? Could we do that, commissioners?
Mayor, we still have another year, uh, under warranty with those nine?
Correct, we're not going to pay for them for another year. We're just wanting to get them to commit to the price.
Are there other tasers going out?
Um, I don't think we would necessarily want to go through different taser because the ones that we're buying are compatible with the cartridge.
Oh, it's, you know, they can bring another upgrade out.
No, no, I, I understand. Uh, sometimes they'll upgrade and it requires new cartridges and batteries, which would be an added expense for us. But I understand what you're saying, we could pose that question to them, if they will commit to that price for the replacement of the other nine next year, um, you know, I, I would certainly ask them and include that in a proposal.
So, so could we, I'm trying to figure out how we can do this tonight and how, so we don't have to deal with it again. Um, Mike, could we deal with this now, saying up to twenty-nine at this price?
Yeah, you could do that, you could, you could pass the motion to waive the bid for the twenty now and authorize up to nine additional units at the current price, that taser is acceptable, is agreeable to that, uh, term, delivery on a schedule to be determined by the police department for those additional tasers.
Okay, and then the only other question I have, commissioners, is, we're talking about fifty-six hundred dollars, the forfeiture fund is getting lower and lower. I mean, we're talking about fifty-six hundred dollars a year for maintaining these tasers. Right now, it's scheduled to come out of the forfeiture fund, should we just say we're going to pay it out of operating and then frank ledger that into the future?
I would like that, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, the city administrator, the...
Can I clarify something? I, I'm going to make sure I understand it, what we're doing here.
Hmm? I know what we're doing on the fly, John, I'm sorry, I...
That's, that's okay. The, the cost of the, the cost, the cost of the tasers is, um, twenty-six thousand dollars for the tasers.
Over five years.
Oh, yes, this, this company is just saying, we're just going to, instead of giving us twenty-six thousand dollars upfront, we're just, we're giving...
Yes, over time.
Right. Right. So that's what we're saying, we're, we're talking about, we'll do up to, authorize up to twenty-nine of the current price.
Payable over the five...
Payable over the five years, as outlined here.
And each taser is about thirteen hundred dollars.
Over five years.
Yes.
We're not, we're, we're, they're giving us an interest-free loan, by the way, it's our time, we're going to take advantage of that, right? I mean, it seems like something we should do. All we're doing is offering, or did you want to pay it all? I thought you wanted yours just...
And I was going to suggest, we, though we said in the last, we paid the thirty-six hundred out of operating, so now what I'm saying is we would pay up to twenty-nine out of operating, including over the five-year, do the whole five-year over, out of operating, as opposed to just taking it out of forfeiture. Save us twenty-six thousand dollars plus out of forfeiture fund, which is getting lower every year.
So we're not paying, so we don't have to make that...
So what we're looking to do is waive the bid process and authorize purchase of up to twenty-nine X-twenty-six P tasers and associated equipment, utilizing Axum Enterprises as a five-year pricing plan, to declare the twenty X-twenty-six tasers as surplus property, and that these dollars shall be, um, this, this would be from the, uh, general operating funds.
Correct. And that the delivery of the additional nine would be on a schedule determined by the police department.
Yes.
I was just saying.
Commissioner Van Laesker, sorry, further?
I, I mean, I, I...
Yeah, further.
All I would just say is that the whole point of having and utilizing the federal forfeiture funds is to utilize them for stuff like this. I mean, we want to grab, you could also fix the dugouts, or we could do other stuff with that money out of our general fund. This is the only stuff that could come out of those federal forfeiture funds, or the stuff that are going to help the police department do their job, and I don't understand why we wouldn't want to use it.
It's dwindling fast, and the fact is that this is the reason we have our cameras that, and my concern is that I, I ask Ross all the time, which we got left, because in just a few short years, we're going to be funding that out of the general operating.
To give you an idea, back in two thousand and five, we had about four point two million dollars in our fund. We're down to about one point six million, and at the rate we're going, I expect that, you know, in seven or eight years, we'll have exhausted this fund.
Right, and I, I understand.
It's a big job to do.
So, we're talking about the fact is that we're only saving ten thousand dollars off of this, or, or in this case, what, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars? I mean, I don't know, just, just seems a little, very difficult. I'd rather utilize it for what they're utilizing it for, and take the money out of our general fund for something else that only gets taken out of our general fund.
There was a motion. Is there a second on Commissioner Long's motion?
I don't know, I started thinking now about what Kyle said, so. I'm thinking. Well, which way would you rather us do it? Would you, would you rather see us take our, the money?
You just want the taser. Can I, can I make a suggestion? You know, the waiver of the bid requires unanimous vote, how you pay for it doesn't. Could you break that up into two motions?
I would do that.
And, and waive the bid for up to twenty-nine purchase to be delivered at the, with the nine to be delivered, um, at the schedule of the police department, see if you can get that done, and then you can maybe do a separate motion on how to pay for it?
I don't know.
If that does not require unanimous?
So I'm going to request the, uh, commission waive the bid process, authorize purchase of up to twenty-nine X-twenty-six P tasers, associated equipment from Axum Enterprises, five-year pricing plan, and declare the twenty-six, well, up to twenty-eight you have now? Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, X-twenty-six tasers as surplus property when you have gotten the new ones.
And the additional nine are delivered on a schedule agreeable?
And the additional nine, as well as the removal of the surplus, to the surplus at the chief's direction.
I'll second it. We have a motion, we have a second to waive bid process and declare surplus property. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, that motion passes five zero.
Now, if you want to cut the other part, you can.
We will discuss, um, the issues brought to the table by Commissioner Long and Commissioner Van Laesker about paying for, um, these items. Further discussion on that topic?
Well, let's city administration figure it out.
Do we have to, but we have to, and, and bring it back? I mean, it's twenty-six, now we have to appropriate the funds, it's over twenty thousand.
Took us thirteen years to spend thirteen million dollars.
One point three, I mean.
Yeah. If we started with four point five, then we have one point six.
I think Kyle has a very good point, that we're limited to what we can pay for out of this police forfeiture fund. We're limited. I mean, we can't pay for dugouts, we can't pay for electric lights, we can't pay for water, but we can pay for police equipment. That's what it's there for. If we want to be more judicial about the way we spend that money, then we need to watch it. So why should we take money out of the general fund when we've got this forfeiture fund? And if we're worried about we're spending too much money, then let's be careful about how much we spend out of that fund as we go forward, or find a new project to get involved and to get more forfeiture money.
Yeah, right.
Obviously, commissioners, it's going to come at times where these funds are not there anymore, and that, that, those funds are going to have to come from the general fund, uh, unless, um, we become involved in a task force again and are able to...
That would be a wonderful thing.
And at some point, we'll take a look at that and see what the options are. A couple of years ago, there were some changes made to the forfeiture, uh, statute, and it made it a little more challenging to get funds through that program.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, that could change, hopefully.
Well, anyway, I, I, I gotta agree with Kyle. I think if we're going to spend this money, let's take it out of the forfeiture fund, let's be careful about how we spend that money, but, uh, why should we rob from Peter to pay Paul?
I agree.
So if that's the case, then you're talking about the years two through five would come out of the forfeiture fund, because we lowered it to that year one is...
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
We need a motion?
I'll make a motion to, go ahead, Mike?
Yeah.
Sorry. No, I thought you were saying something. I'd like to make a motion for the years two through five to come out of the federal forfeiture funds for the taser X-twenty-six basics.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second to appropriate funds out of the infrastructure, uh, geez, out of the forfeiture fund in the amount of fifty-six hundred dollars for years two through five. All in favor?
Fifty-six hundred.
Per year, per year.
But, but again...
Plus the additional nine.
Plus the additional nine.
Oh, plus the additional nine, correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Chief?
Thank you. Final item, commissioners, I'm asking that you consider declaring forty-seven firearms, holsters and magazines, pouches as surplus property. Um, we are currently using forty-caliber semi-automatic Glock firearms. Uh, the firearms have been in place for ten years, and, uh, recently we've been experiencing some, uh, maintenance and replacement part issues with the firearms during our firearms training. Uh, the firearms are in need of work and, uh, replacement parts, which, uh, are going to cost around forty-two hundred dollars, plus take about another forty man-hours to replace. We have the option of, um, trading in those firearms for new firearms at a net cost of six hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, which we're hoping to get from our forfeiture fund. So I'm requesting that the city commission authorize us to declare six Smith &amp; Wesson fifty-nine or six semi-automatic firearms, three Colt handguns, and thirty-eight Glock forty-caliber handguns as surplus property. And, uh, it's a total of forty-seven firearms noted on the attachment that you have in front of you, and to dispose of those firearms accordingly. The disposal will include trading in the Glock and Smith &amp; Wesson handguns to loose police distributors for eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and sell the Colt revolvers to only the best firearms for two thousand six hundred dollars. And as I stated before, our net cost to outfit all of our officers with brand-new firearms is six hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The money that we paid for the original Glock forty-caliber firearm came from our forfeiture fund over ten years ago, so if we were to surplus that property, it has to go back into the forfeiture account anyway.
There you go.
So, it makes sense to, to use that and to transition into new firearms for our officers.
But is it the six forty-seven outgoing? Didn't we agree that that's going to come out of operating?
Yes.
So, in other words, this cash will come in?
It's a net, it's a net, it's a net number, okay. See, we increased...
Here you go.
Commissioners, discussion questions for, pardon, for Chief? I'm sorry, it's been a long day. I appreciate you.
That's fine, who's got the Colt Diamondback revolver, Chief? That's not hard enough, I have that one.
I have it right now.
You're willing to give that up? That's a collector's item, isn't it?
It is, but we have no use for it. Uh, it's sitting in our armory right now and collecting dust, and we can make better use of it.
The chief just cuts it every so often, checks on it. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I would, uh, offer a motion to consider declaring forty-seven firearms, holsters and magazines as discussed by the chief as surplus property.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Chief. Um, we are on to, uh, number seven, consider declaring fire department inventory, Scott self-contained breathing apparatus and Motorola eight-hundred megahertz radios as surplus property. Chief, Bill Martin?
Good evening, commissioners, um, here to ask your permission to declare fire department inventory SCVAs and Motorola eight-hundred megahertz radios as surplus property. Our, um, Scott self-contained breathing apparatus were purchased in two thousand and four, the SCVAs were replaced due to age, warranty expiration and high cost of repairs. The radios replaced as required by Broward County P-25 Digital Public Safety Communication System. Uh, at this time, all our new S, uh, our new MSA SCVAs and P-25 compliant radios are all in service, uh, in our vehicles and our portals are all set, and our SCVAs are all in service, everyone trained and used. We have forty Scott air bottles and twenty Scott harnesses, and we have six mobile radios and eleven portable radios for surplus. There was no trade-in option on either of the radios or the, uh, SCVAs, they were bought through grants, also was, almost all was bought through grant, through a grant, there was no, uh, no, uh, trade-in value that was given to them, it wasn't part of any kind of contract that was negotiated. So, yeah, none. Um, financial impact, we, I've reached out numerous places to try to find someone to buy used equipment from fire traders and different magazines where they sell them. The harnesses and stuff that we have because of their age, they're, no one's looking to buy them either as used or, or whatever reason. Um, the radios, eight-hundred megahertz radios that we have that we're, that we're trying to get rid of, there was no trade-in value. It is a possibility to turn them over to the Motorola salesman, he was, he would just put them on a website or something and see if he could sell them on a thing there. Um, so, currently, right now, I've been trying to shop them around to see if we can make some kind of deal with someone, either Broward Fire Academy, to see if they can take our harnesses and stuff like that to use in training, and then we could take off the price of what it costs to do our drivers' tests and the other training and stuff that we do at Broward Fire Academy. The radios, I'm trying to work with some of the bigger departments like Brad BSO, to take, we have so few, but they, they're, they, uh, have so many contract cities that they have to get their, their, them to allot the money to buy the radios, that they need to keep their radios and stuff going for at least another year to eight, up to eighteen months. So they, some, they might need some backup stuff that they might be able to make a deal with us as far as the supply that we buy from...
Chief, sorry, can you change the channel on those?
Yes.
Can you give them to Public Works or something?
They're, it's not the same, it's, they're eight-hundred megahertz radios.
Not nine-hundred megahertz.
That's what you're thinking. You want 900-megahertz system with Avron Tower.
Okay.
No, that one can't change. They're public safety radios anyway, so that's what the deal is. And the rest of the places, the rest of the county is going, of course, to the P-25 that we have, and the rest of the country is also.
Any further questions for Chief Delmar?
Shit in South America, that's where all the other things go.
You haven't been able to sell our radios for us, though?
You probably could, actually. You could find somewhere. The problem is the rest of the country is going to the updated system.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to clarify. Department inventory of Scott self-contained breathing apparatus, Motorola 800-megahertz radios, a surplus property, sell, trade, donate, or auction with the approval of the city administration. The actual listed inventory is on the attached agenda of June 2008 for the SCV inventory, as well as the Motorola 800 megahertz.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Chief.
On to resolutions. Resolution approving an agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources Conservation Service for removal of debris at Northeast 53rd Court Waterway.
Sir?
Of the board's director.
Evening, commissioners. Mayor, as a result of Hurricane Irma, there was some hurricane debris deposited in the 53rd Court Waterway. The debris caused by the hurricane has intensified the flooding risk and potential in the area. The waterway is located on the north border between Lighthouse Point and Deerfield Beach. FEMA does not fund this type of removal from waterways. That funding is provided by the Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is an agency under the United States Department of Agriculture. So a few months ago, we met with representatives. We did a site visit, and we went through the grant process. They have approved our request. The total project cost is $169,094.28. As with other federally funded projects, they have a 75-25 match. They pay 75%. City would pay 25%. The numbers are listed here. The NRCS would pay $129,773, with the Lighthouse Point to pay $39,324.25. Now, with the waterway being between Lighthouse Point and Deerfield Beach, we approached them regarding sharing, splitting that 25%, 50-50. They have verbally agreed to that, with each city being responsible for $19,662 approximately. I will be coming back after this, if this is approved with... In our local agreement with Deerfield Beach to commit to the payment. So at this point, I would recommend the city commission adopt the resolution approving the project agreement with the NRCS to remove the debris from the 53rd Court Waterway and authorize the city officials to...
Motion read.
Motion read.
Second.
A resolution of the city commission of City of Lighthouse Point, Florida approving a project agreement between the City of Lighthouse Point and Natural Resources Conservation Service, the United States Department of Agriculture, authorizing appropriate city officials to execute their documents and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mark. Is this going to take care of this all the way from Lighthouse Point Drive to the intercoastal?
Almost to the intercoastal.
Right.
Lighthouse Point ends just...
It ends right there where that condominium...
Correct.
Well, that's good because it hasn't been cleaned up in a long time, so that's a good thing to get done.
Last time was Hurricane Wilma.
Yeah. Got to say about it.
And we did the same thing after Wilma, and we looked at the costs, and this is... And if... What happens now is if you approve the resolution, we go out to bid, we place an RFP. If the number comes in under the 169, the NRCS had estimated that we worked with, then it's still a 75-25 match.
Yeah, well, without a doubt, we need to get it done. And I would offer a resolution approving the agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, remove the debris of the 53rd Court Waterway.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Just a quick question. Money's will come out of operating? Where are the 19 grand?
Will this be...
Structure, structure?
You can tell it's Stormwater Fund.
Stormwater Fund. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes 5-0.
My grandparents used to work on that ditch that was the waterway.
It's the waterway.
We can't call it the ditch here.
It is a mosquito nightmare.
But there are very nice mangroves back in there.
The mangroves are on the Deerfield side. Good thing for us.
Which is a good thing for us. Number nine. Resolution approving interlocal agreement regarding the same item addressed in resolution and item number eight.
Yes, sir. Some time ago, actually last November, I was before the commission in an attempt to describe the increased maintenance costs at the Exchange Club Park due to the fine rehabilitation that was performed in 2016. We discussed the original agreement requires Lighthouse Point in a broad sense just to perform maintenance. So after studying the maintenance costs, it was sorbitant, and we went back to Pompano Beach, and we have discussed a better division of labor and things. So as a result of the meetings, we've agreed to more fairly share the responsibilities for maintenance. Our maintenance will include still the daily cleaning of the restrooms and the trash and beach and cutting the grass that's behind the wooden guardrail. If you recall, they also asked Lighthouse Point to pay for the water and the electric. They have now agreed to keep paying those costs, but they asked us to perform a quarterly maintenance in the mangrove area. There's actually an exhibit attached that shows a rough map. We've agreed to perform a quarterly maintenance in there, just removing debris and broken tree limbs and things like that. There is some increased cost with this. I've broken down the financial impact there. The daily cleaning is a wash. That's the same... That would be the same cost we've always incurred. The biweekly cutting and trim has gone up about 30% due to the increased area. The quarterly mangrove is extra, and miscellaneous tree work and chemicals and supplies. That's all the same that we've always been required to do. So at this point, we request the city commission consider adopting the resolution approving the interlocal agreement between Lighthouse Point and the City of Pompano Beach for the joint operation of maintenance of Exchange Club Park and authorize city officials to execute the documents.
Motion read, commissioners? Motion read.
Second.
A resolution of the city commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Pompano Beach and the City of Lighthouse Point for joint operation and maintenance of Exchange Club Park located at the northeast 24th Street, fined property, authorizing appropriate city officials to execute the necessary documents and providing for an effective date.
Commissioners, discussion? All right. Do you have a question or are you agreeing with the motion?
I have a question.
I have one, too, so that's fine.
How much do you think the additional cost of the mangroves will be? How much worth that?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand twenty-nine. I mean, if they're saying quarterly, I mean, we got high tides, regular trash.
Well, that's true, and that's why we put quarterly in there. If they... If it was straight up maintain the mangroves, then with every single high tide, it could be a daily operation going there, pulling out coconuts and things like that. That's why we wanted to just say quarterly. I'll set a schedule, you know, January 1st, April 1st. We'll get it done that week. I'm estimating one six-person crew for a full day. There'll probably be some debris. There may be some tipping fees. I've included some loads to the dump in here, and we'll just... We'll do that.
My other question is, why is it in the interlocal agreement where it still talks about Lighthouse Point needing this space as part of their open space requirements? The comp plan, would that no longer be part of the deal?
Well, I think we still include it. I don't know if we still need it.
At the time, but, you know, it makes it sound like, yeah, in order to enable. I mean, it could have had a little thing in there saying it's no longer... Which you no longer need. I mean, what's the matter of referring back to why we originally did it when this is not the intent of the map?
Are you talking about in the warehouse?
Yeah, second paragraph.
Right in the beginning.
Just an ear to continue since, you know, I worked hard to get it, so we didn't have to do that.
I mean, it's up to you if you want to make that change. It's going before their city commission this evening as well. We'd have to probably see whether it would require a second round of renewals, if we make any changes at this point.
I'm not going to make a big stink, but, you know, the fact is, I don't want the city of Pompano thinking they got us because they... We need that. We don't. You know, my feelings about spending money in other people's cities, so...
I think we shared that with them during the conversations, and then maybe just this warehouse to carry over and apologize that we didn't make the intention to update this language, but it does refer back to the initial purpose of doing it.
Yeah. Initial, not current.
We'll make sure we convey that to them again.
My quick question, Chuck, is I just remember looking at this prior agreement, and it was just honestly inart... It was old and inartfully drafted. Are you comfortable, since it's your crew and you that are going to actually be doing the work that this adequately spells out sufficiently clearly?
What, who's doing what?
Yes, with the map, it helps.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
And the quarterly on the mangroves, that raised a red flag immediately when they said maintain the mangroves. I don't... I got the feeling they're getting a lot of calls about stuff in there, even though it's... I've been back in there. It's not a great place to go. There's tons of things to trip on, and I can see, you know, we'll get the wood out of there, but I could also see we could clean it out. There could be a storm a week later.
And it's back.
And we'll be back next quarter.
That's right. Okay, that's with the contracts.
Right.
Okay.
Responsible for the policing of it?
Well...
That's a separate agreement, right?
Yeah, we have an agreement now for some policing authority in there, but we open and close the park. We haven't...
Sorry, let me... It's on page six of the agreement. It references the agreement, the law enforcement agreement we did enter into and we collated with BSO and the City of Pompano Beach so that we could go in there into the park and enforce not just state law, but Pompano Code relating to things that could go in there. And so there is a process in that agreement for our police department to coordinate with BSO, and that's just incorporated in this agreement because that... It exists today, so that is mentioned there. Anything else, commissioners? Motion. You retain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-2199.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Resolution 2018-2199. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes 5-0.
Very much.
Thank you very much. Item number 10. Resolution appointing members to the community appearance board. Ms. O.
Yes, thank you. We have a vacancy on the community appearance board due to Mark Mackey's recent resignation, and he's now serving on the planning zoning board. We have a application on file from Cheryl Lee, so I would like to recommend moving Dominic Romano to serve as a regular member to fill the unexpired term with Mark Mackey and to appoint Cheryl Lee to serve as our new alternate member.
Motion read.
Motion read. Thank you.
Second.
A resolution of the city commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, appointing and moving Dominic Romano, a current alternate member, board member, to serve as a regular member, and appointing Cheryl Lee to serve as an alternate member of the community appearance board, providing for board members with a term of office and providing for an effective date.
Commissioners, discussion?
Getting a good guy on the board now as a permanent member, would you say?
Any other... Is that motion passed?
Second.
A motion to pass, 20... And a second, 2018-2200. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes 5-0. Breakneck pace now. Resolution declaring intent to reimburse certain capital improvement project costs incurred with proceeds of future tax-exempt financing or other obligations. Finance Director Apollo.
Thank you. This is a reimbursement resolution brought upon because of the land deal that's currently in the works. So that... The intention of that is to be financed at a later date through the forthcoming bond issue if it passes by the voters, and this is just another formality. It's kind of like we do with our capital leases. I'm just going to say on the record that it's our intent to finance this purchase with tax-exempt bonds at a later date. And recommend that the city commission approve the resolution declaring intent to reimburse the general fund and the proceeds of future taxes and financing for expenses related to these projects.
And just to make it clear, this isn't just if the GO passes. If the GO doesn't pass, and we want to do alternative taxes and financing for, say, the purchase that you're going through right now, this is... This would apply to allow you to reimburse yourself for what you're doing for the purchase in the event the GO bond doesn't pass. You have to look at other types of lending. In other words... There wouldn't be any other tax-exempt type of lending, though? It could be you can pledge a budget to... Oh, it's tax-exempt. Pledge a budget for it. Yeah. There's other, you know, but, you know, this way, if it passes, you're covered, and if it doesn't, you can research other alternatives if you wanted to. Do a loan to reimburse yourself for the purchase of the property and all the costs associated with that that's being incurred today. Motion to read.
Second.
A resolution of the city commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, pertaining to finance established in the city's intent to reimburse certain capital improvement projects incurred with proceeds of future tax-exempt financing or other obligations, providing certain other matters in connection there with, and providing for an effective date.
Discussion, commissioners?
Motion passed.
A motion to pass.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Final item on our agenda, resolution renaming and designating parts of Northeast 24th Street, Northeast 30th Avenue, Northeast 31st Avenue, and Northeast 48th Street along the intercoastal waterway as Intracoastal Drive, plus the corrected street that was mentioned earlier.
So on March 27th, Mr. Leo Benz asked the city commission to consider renaming some streets along the intercoastal waterway to Intracoastal Drive. Mr. Benz would incur all the costs involved in replacing the signs. So I contacted Broward County Traffic Engineering Division. They said if, as long as they have a resolution from the city commission, they would consider doing this. I've got a verbal cost of approximately $250 per sign. There would be some approval of the... Some proofs and some things like that, so we make sure Mr. Benz is involved with that. So there would be no cost to the city other than some time. So at this time, I would recommend the city commission consider adopting the resolution to rename the aforementioned streets along the intercoastal waterway as Intracoastal Drive.
Commissioners, is there a motion to read?
Motion to read.
Second.
A resolution of the city commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, authorizing the renaming and designation of streets along Intracoastal Waterway as Intracoastal Drive, providing authority to the city administration to take all actions necessary to implement the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date. Mr. President, can I just ask a question? One of the coordinates, maybe. You said you're going to add some streets, so could the Section 2 cover all the streets that are making up Intracoastal Drive?
Are we talking about the ones that Leo brought up here? The 25 through the 46th Street?
You'll have to give us the legal descriptions. Can't just give us the street numbers.
Well, if you want to override that...
Those are just streets that run along the Intracoastal?
Yeah. Palm area is private.
Palm area is private, that's correct.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be it. The area of DeGraw Park would be from DeGraw... And it wouldn't be DeGraw Park because the address faces the other street.
Correct.
Could be where Roger Zorn's house is, all the way down to Jim Dunn's.
Right.
Yeah, down there at Roy Rogers. Has anybody ever asked any of these people if they're in for it? Besides Leo?
His son, I think, is...
Son doesn't live in Lighthouse Point, he lives in Port Lighthouse.
I think he is now, or...
Well, but Bill, I mean, seriously, I mean, I'm not against this, but, you know, we're deciding how it was going to change your address, and Jason, you might want 47 to be, you know, Goffy Way or something, and all you got to do is put up a few signs.
But we're really not changing the address because it doesn't have the street address.
Same street address.
Then why are we going through these motions if somebody said?
Because he's got to pay for it, and it's kind of a nice little thing. I think it's nice.
I just kind of think it's nice, but, you know, if we get into this, so everybody comes up and comes up with a name with their street, Isle of Palms for mine.
Okay.
And you'll see Appleville on my street this weekend.
I do think that's a valid point, like, I guess my hesitation is, is it like opening Pandora's box there about naming things?
If somebody wants to come in and spend the money and bring it before the City Commission, we can vote on it.
I just think there's got to be a better, a better process here on this one. I mean, what if I live there and I'm against this wasteful spending of anything because the government's...
It's not on the way.
Well, you say that, but, you know, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here. I mean, that's...
So noted.
I just think overall, I think we should at least ask them through a survey like we do with everything else, do you have an issue with this? Is this okay? No thoughts to taxpayers?
I mean, I'm kind of actually, I'm not so much worried about the people not liking it, I'm more worried about the fact is, is that we're sitting back up here, and to Earl's point, who kind of cares if someone's going to pay for it, but ultimately in the end, we get into this whole thing of, well, you know what, I want my name to be Palm Street, I want my name to be, you know, Gulf Avenue, I want... And then you get to the point where, and I do understand Leo's passion for it, and I understand the reasoning behind it, but again, we come back down to the fact is, is where do we stop? And whether it's costing up into the city or not, I think that that's a very valid concern. That's, it's a very, very valid concern, and if it wasn't for, if it wasn't Leo, I don't think it may be made consideration.
Yeah.
How did we come about changing 2030th Avenue to Lighthouse Drive?
We don't, Fred Braveman did, yeah. And he'll tell you about it every time we see him.
But I mean, did we just, did we just do it like this?
Oh, no, no, no.
And what about Marina Drive, same thing?
Happened at the same time, same time.
But did they go and ask residents, or what did they do? Because I don't remember, I was having babies and stuff, so I just knew it would change.
He said he came up with the idea and brought to the commission, they debated it and talked about it, and thought it would kind of create the nuance to it, to the city, which is totally opposite of the canal ends down on 39th, which are all Italian pieces, but, you know, kind of went that way.
All those names are on the old original plots.
Yeah. So we kind of moved into more of the Lighthouse piece rather than the Venice of...
Okay.
I don't think it's arbitrary or capricious, I think there's a geographical reason to do it, it's along the Intercoastal Drive, so it's not like somebody coming up from 25th Court saying, "I want to change my street name because it's got Palm trees on it." I think there's a logical explanation to do it, I think it makes it nice for the city. I think the person that recommended it is a well-known and city advocate and has been for many, many years, and he brought it up and he, he's willing to pay for it, so I think we're making more out of it than it needs to be, I don't think. I mean, if we were changing all the street names and everybody had to change their mailing address, then I would agree with you totally, but that doesn't have to happen.
I'll pay for the sign if I can do 25th, 21st Avenue as Isle of Palms.
Here, well, bring it up, let me know how much...
That could be any street in the city, though.
Yeah.
But Intracoastal Drive...
I call it first, I call it first. I'm not surprised, you know, at least get some, put it on next door. Figure out these people, I mean, they always put something on next door, ask them. And I'm sure everyone would probably say, "That's pretty cool." But again, the way we went about is the question that I had, the process.
It was noticed, I mean, it was, I get your point, Mike, but it was noticed.
It was noticed, just being dumped in here as item 12.
How you're legally supposed to do it, I mean...
All I can say is when Leo brought it up and brought it before the commission, the commission was receptive to it and told administration...
Yes, you're right.
Move forward and come up with...
And you guys did.
...make it happen.
It was more of a problem, I don't know, I think it was more of a problem.
Commissioner Bam Buskirk has informed the Chair that he is ready to make a motion.
Well, you know what, listen, I'm ready to make a motion, so I want to make a resolution to approve Resolution Number 2018-2202, to also include lot 22 through 25 at the end of 46th Street and the 31st Avenue over by DeGraw Park.
Second.
And I'll also...
South of DeGraw Park.
South, I'm sorry, south of DeGraw Park, but I want to also mention that it's all, no cost, had no cost to the city.
Just a question, I'll just, a second here. Lot 22 to 25, is that just one side of the street? I think it's supposed to be both sides, so just to make sure it's the entire street, because that would be, let's see, 46th Street.
I'm just verifying that.
Again, I'm not going to fight this thing, because I'm telling you with my $250 check for Isle of Palms and making these 22nd Avenue.
31st Street west of Lighthouse Drive is going to be Ball Guy Way next week.
Yeah.
Ball Guy Way. All right, we have a motion?
We all have a motion.
Do we have a second?
I have to.
Wait, can I finish a second? Are you clarifying something?
Hold on, on 46th Street, it dead, it dead ends.
No, it turns to the, I think there's a little, there's a little roundabout.
But it's right here. It's, it's from 26th...
46th Street.
I'm sorry, no, 46th, it dead ends, right?
No, he's talking about, he's talking about 45th Street.
Yeah, it's got to be the section, it's 45th Street he's talking about.
It's got to be 45th between...
31st Avenue.
31st Avenue between 44th Street and 45th Street.
Commissioner Druff, I don't need the street sign on my street to, for them to know that it's my street.
And then 48th Street.
Anywhere in that 31st Avenue now.
Okay, we got 48th Street as well, which would be on it. Because that corner of 48th Street revolves around, comes around.
Okay.
If we're going to do it, do it right.
No, I, listen, if we're going to...
31st Avenue, 30th Avenue.
Hold on. Just hold on a second. 48th Street is already on, on the reso, so the only thing that's not on here is that section of 31st Avenue between 44th Street and 45th Street.
Well, actually, you don't have to, because it does say 24th Street, 30th Avenue, 31st Avenue, 48th Street. So I don't know, we thought about the end of 46th.
Nothing at the end of 46th.
Do you need to get all this?
Mr. President, Commissioner.
At the end of 46th Street, it's just a straight run all the way down the Intercoastal way at the end, there's one big house on the end of 46th Street in the cul-de-sac, so that's why we didn't put that in the reso, because we don't know how to change the, add the name of 46th Street all the way up down the end, and there's, and there's just one house down there. And then if you look at 48th Street, we have that on there because it does, when it gets down the Intercoastal, it does make a turn to the south, and there's a half a dozen or so, eight houses there, so we're going to put a sign there.
Doesn't 45th Street, though, do the same thing?
Yes.
Well, that's 31st Avenue.
Oh, so that's your concern, that part of the...
But the street before that 31st Avenue there, is that not 30th Avenue? If you go to 40...
30th Terrace, it says.
Oh, it's Terrace, okay.
Yeah, it's 30th Ave, 30th Terrace, and 31st Avenue.
But there's a 30th Ave there, so we have to be careful that 30th Ave doesn't get confused with 30th Ave by the Marina.
That's an Marina.
That's a reso.
So Commissioner... So what do we, Commissioners, what do we need to add to the, to the resolution to make it, to make it...
So the resolution would be, for the DeGraw Park is 31st Ave between Northeast 51st Street and Northeast 52nd Street.
Yeah, we've already got 31st Ave on the list.
31st Ave is already on the list.
So then why do we even...
Okay, sorry, I do not...
We don't even need to modify it, it looks like.
I'm sure Leo will remind us if we do. Our city administration can check it.
I agree with that.
So...
Earl, you in touch?
We have a, no, we have a, I believe we have a, we had a motion, and I believe we had a second to approve the resolution as drafted, as beautifully drafted. Um, I'm ready to call the questions, I don't know about you, but we have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nay, and no person, oh, no, sorry, no, no, motion passes five zero, I would have guessed. And the only problem is Leo wasn't here to see it. He would have loved the debate.
He would have loved that debate.
Hi, public requests, moving on, public requests from the floor, that was not our finest hour, Commissioners, that was just... Not our finest hour.
That was not good.
Um, okay, public requests from the floor, if any residents have stuck around to the bitter end, you've more than earned your right to address the commission on a...
You've definitely earned your right for a full...
So all, all we ask is that you state your name and your address.
Tony Rushden, my address 2257 Northeast 25th Street. Excuse me, I'm just walking in. I've got a notice for infraction of the hedge height, and I'm in protest of applying, that's not the main issue, I just find that it's an unusual law, because I don't see the utility of it, I've spoken to code enforcement, I've spoken and sent emails to various commissioners, I don't see the utility, because there's a sign of light, or sight of blind view or something, but it's not a safety view, and probably when you cut that hedge, it becomes uncycling, and it looks funny, you have a hedge going for 25 foot, a five foot and coming up to eight feet, going straight again, and it just doesn't contribute anything. And then the other thing, I spoke to the code enforcement lady, she was very, very good, she mentioned they changed a policy, before it was enforced only on complaint, it's now general enforcement, and they've taken quite, looked at photographs, identified hedges, I imagine, checked the hedges out, it must be tremendous amount of their time and effort in enforcing this regulation, which, again, I don't see a lot of utility for, and you don't really, she could be spending, it's a very small department, if I look at the budget, it's only $200,000, yes, I imagine there's not a lot of people there, and now they're spending all this time doing this hedge thing, and, I mean, they could be looking at the bulk trash, maybe, you know, because they have such a big expense, I'm just wondering why the policy was changed, and if there's any consideration to amending the ordinance to allow an eight-foot hedge.
I would just, I'm, I just want to, are you on a corner lot, is that what it is?
No, no, I'm not on a corner lot. Before it's a complaint, I could understand if a neighbor complained, and I wouldn't know why unless there's some sort of personal animosity, because everybody wants a high hedge, and quite frankly, when you've got an eight-foot hedge, your maintenance costs are higher, so you, an eight-foot hedge well maintained is a lot better than a five-foot hedge ill-maintained, you know, it's really a question, I think as far as hedges are concerned, is how well you maintain them, not how high they are.
And I, we have a little, I mean, one of the things is, you've had these eight-foot hedges for a long time.
Yeah.
But prior, prior to that, when you were at Carolyn Stash's old house, right?
Yes, I'm in that house, yeah.
The hedge, you know, as it was, was out of compliance until we actually changed it up to eight feet, because it was supposed to be six feet. So that piece, you know, is actually working in your favor.
Yeah.
The part in the front, when you talk about the code enforcement, you know, one of the issues that came up are, are we going to enforce these codes? Because a lot of times people say, "Look, you're pitting me against my neighbor, my neighbor complains," and there's those fights, so basically the City Commission directed, hopefully I'm speaking for everyone because we talked about this, was saying, "Start enforcing these codes." So when they're coming down your street, they're enforcing hedge heights, they're enforcing landscaping, they're enforcing everything else, and not waiting for your neighbor or someone else across the street who's unhappy with you to do that. So that's kind of one of the things that probably was a change, if you want to call it policy, or you just want to call it just, you know, our standard of operating here.
Well, I understand they, they, when I spoke to the enforcement officer, they actually looked at aerial surveys of things and identified houses, this was a, this wasn't just, okay, let's start enforcing it on your way, start, this was a concerted action, a lot of resources devoted to this, and to me, you guys are worrying about the bulk, why can't they devote and find people knocking, you know, putting their trash and not, not having it hauled away, there's a lot of other things they could be doing, it's a small department, and I just think this is a waste of resources, never mind the money involved in changing this policy. Now, it won't affect me, I'm in the loop, but I just think it's a waste of money and time and more important resources, because there are more important things for them to do. And then on the other side, yes, why five foot and not eight foot? Nobody's given me a valid argument for why it's enforced, because it's on the statutes, let's enforce it, but why? We've got to ask ourselves, why, everybody likes a nice hedge, everybody likes privacy, it's not creating any safety hazard, it's not creating any, and it looks good, if you maintain it, it looks good, so I just wonder why that law's on the books and then, more than that, why we're making this very, very proactive enforcement of the law? It just seems to me a little bit out of kilter, basically.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'll address it, I appreciate you bringing, bringing it up, I think it could be something that, I mean, we talked about possibly, you know, we're going to be looking at our entire city code, I guess, in a grand plan kind of thing, this is something that could at least be looked at, and we're looking at the entire city code, I mean, I get it...
We could, but there was extensive debate on hedges, particularly in front yards, and the consensus of the commission was very clear that it should not exceed five feet into the setback.
Right.
So we probably would not relook at that section, because the consensus, the commission was very clear that of a five-foot, five-foot number. So, and that's why when we adjusted the hedge height ordinance and allowed it to be raised in the side yards and in the front of houses to the setback line, it was not, did not go any further than that. So from an administration point of view, the commission gave direction that enforced the ordinance, and five foot is what it is, and that's what we did.
I understand, I guess, I'm just, if we're looking at the...
Excuse me, wouldn't it be more logical to enforce the front edge? I understand the front edge, you can, you know, quite frankly, most people don't have anything on the front edge, very few people have front edges, and leave the side eight foot in there, because that, it just doesn't, it looks funny, you know, I'm going to cut that hedge now, and I'm going to have this thing and then hop up to eight foot and go along again, and it, when I cut it, I've been talking to enforcement, because I'm really concerned, because when you cut slightly three foot down on a, on an eight-foot hedge, it's quite, you know, it's quite, I don't know if it's going to kill off the hedge or something, because it's really, and you have all these big, it just becomes unsightly.
Well, I will tell you, code enforcement is working with people so that they can take their hedge down in steps, steps, sorry, and they said they're, they're going to be working with you.
I'm talking about, and that's more likely what I do, I'm talking to landscaper because I'm...
Right, and I think the recommendation I heard from the landscaper that adjusted my neighbor's hedge was to take more than two feet off at a time, let it grow in, and take time more off, let it grow in, and that way you don't shot the hedge.
But I still ask the question, why?
Is it, is it a safe, just to answer the gentleman's question, is it, is it the sideline issue?
When you say sideline, for what reason?
We want a sideline, why?
So, example, a police officer is looking for someone, they can see into your front yard.
Five-foot hedge, eight-foot hedge, you're not going to make a difference.
Makes a difference.
You've got somebody, I'd like to speak to, and I, I mean, yes, ideally there'd be no hedge, then we'll see everything, but I mean, it's all a matter of...
There was actually discussion about not allowing any hedge in the front yard.
Yeah, well, then, then, no, then you have trees, let the trees down, let's just have concrete, I mean, where do we start?
Commissioner Johnson asked a question, is why are we enforcing this part of the code and that some other?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you have to be reasonable in the fact that if we're going to tell code enforcement to enforce our codes, we're not going to tell, and cherry pick which ones that work better for some residents and not the other.
There are a lot of, yeah, but I mean...
It's your, your thought.
I understand, but one of the complaints, just let's talk about it, you're talking about the bulk trash, that's not being enforced, people aren't finding them, surely that person who's now going around enforcing hedges, if they spend more of their time looking and trying to identify, distract, fight, fake, and if you ordinance much greater, wouldn't it be better served? I mean, it's not a big department, and I'm all for code enforcement, for people who can go inside, they're dangerous, all this, but it's a limited resources you've got here, and it seems to me, I just don't understand why so much, and talking to her, it's quite a big effort on, on her department to do this, why it's been, why it's been prioritized? Of course, all codes should be enforced, but we know realistically, you've got to make choices, and I just think this is, this is an ill-advised choice, that's all.
Commissioner, is there any further discussion on this?
No. I mean, listen, I'm with Commissioner Druff, I, I wouldn't mind reevaluating the fact of where that looks at, I mean, if other, I mean, I'm just kind of perusing through, trying, because I drove past your house and I understand, I mean, that this hedge sits back about 10 to 12 feet off the wall.
Sits back over there, yeah, I think, I'm not sure of the actual line, so it's not right to the street to come back, which is...
I mean, I just wouldn't, I, I have no issues with reviewing, reviewing whether they maybe want to let the front hedge come out a little bit further.
And I'm not suggesting we do it like right away, separate...
Neither am I, I'm asking a process.
We're looking at the process.
What's your address again?
2257 Northeast, Northeast 25th Street.
All right, well, thank you for bringing, thank you for bringing your question.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for sticking around. Communications, Commissioners. Any other streets we need to talk about?
Do we close your comments before?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, and no one else, there's no other residents that survived this long, so, does anybody of our city staff wanna come up and address it? I don't think so, so I'm gonna close public comment, and now go to communications.
Oh, I just wanted to mention one thing--
You go first, Commissioner, then.
Well, since you were, you looked at me--
Yeah.
A knock. I would just say the, the other day, actually, two residents over the last couple days have